Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 9th, 2019 Board Meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:45 for the items listed on the agenda. We have six Board members present, one absent, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight we get to do some of our favorite things, which is honor our students for their achievements. So tonight if all the students in the York High School Mock Trial Team would come up and stand in the middle here, and also their teacher or coach with them. Can everyone hear me okay? I would like to thank the Board for this opportunity to publicly congratulate the York Mock Trial State Champions. As you can imagine, these are a very hard-working group of young ladies and gentlemen. Mock Trial is an interesting activity, and it's highly competitive in the state of Illinois. It involves them analyzing a case and presenting both sides in an actual court of law against another team. We have real judges that preside over these cases and lawyers that evaluate their performance. Every time, without fail, the lawyers and the judges are blown away by this group of young people. They establish themselves as knowledgeable and poised and ready to meet any challenge that any other team might face them. They could all go to law school next year and do just fine. We are headed to Athens, Georgia, March 15th. We are going to national mock trial competition for the first time in York's history. This is actually an international competition. There'll be a team there from South Korea. We will also have teams from some of the territories in the United States, including Guam and Puerto Rico. So we've already decided that we were going to scrimmage prior to the competition with the South Korean team and the Hawaiian team. So it'll be an opportunity for them to meet people from around the globe that share their passions. So we're very excited to have this opportunity to compete down in Athens, Georgia. We have told our seniors that we will get them here home in time for graduation, however, on the 19th, so that's very important. I know the proclamation, are we going to read the proclamation? Does give notice to all of those who won individual awards, so I will not repeat that. I would just like to acknowledge the two people behind me who support me, and we are definitely a team, the children, the children, excuse me, the young people and the coaches. And so I have Ms. Beth Burchler, who teaches in the Social Studies and Business Department at York, and she is a huge help and is someone who's always by my side when we coach this team. And then this is Mr. Matt Taylor, who is our advisor volunteer lawyer. Matt is a former Palatine Police Department employee and a current lawyer, and actually him and I went to high school together. And he comes on a weekly basis to help us out and give us feedback, as well as traveling to competitions with us. So if we could give them a round of applause, that would be great. I'm going to turn the mic over, and so the proclamation can be read. Thank you.
Welcome. Last year, you faced success last year, and I went through some of the things that demonstrated how some of the greatest societal transformations that our country has faced have gone through the crucible of litigation. And the only one that I think that needs to bear repeating is Brown versus Board of Education. It's one of the reasons we're all here tonight. This is an amazing accomplishment for you guys, state champs. That is really good. And you're obviously geared toward this way, and this is an excellent pursuit. And it just displays the sort of things that this community provides for its kids, and we're just happy as can be that you guys have shown such excellence. So I will read the proclamation. And whereas, the Illinois State Bar Association High School Mock Trial Program provides an opportunity for students to learn what it's like to prepare and present a legal case before the Illinois courts, and are required to analyze case and compete by presenting both the plaintiff and defense sides of the trial atmosphere. And whereas, over the course of the school year, the team completed in six regional competitions judged by real judges and lawyers, including the University of Illinois School of Law Competition in March, which ultimately led them to the state competition where they competed among teams from all over Illinois. Whereas, the York High School Mock Trial Team was judged based on their ability to work as a team, set goals, plan effectively, think on their feet, face challenging obstacles, and demonstrate exceptional oral presentation skills. And whereas, the team of Katherine Klug, Annika Jacob, Maya Ayer, Lexi Lukos, Anthony Aguilar, Sarah Martich, Andrea Guro, Ava Gerke, Vanessa Bardoshi, Eleanor Kness, along with coaches Amy Mueller, Elizabeth Burchler, represented the York Community High School in the state finals, where they finished first place overall. Whereas, in addition to the team award, York also received six individual awards, including the Donna E. Schechter Memorial Law Test Award, the state award for highest team average on the law test. Whereas, ISBA honored Katie Klug, Lexi Lukos, Andrea Guro for Best Attorney, Katie Klug and Anthony Aguilar for Best Witness, and finally Lexi Lukos as only student in the state to score a perfect score on the exam. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the students, their families, and this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School, District 205, express congratulations to these students and their families for their outstanding academic accomplishments. Congratulations. So if you would all come take a copy of the resolution and shake hands all the way around, all right?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So if all of the students in that would come forward with their teachers, would be great to the middle.
On behalf of the Elmhurst Community School District 205 Middle School Music Department, it is my honor and privilege to announce the middle school students accepted to the Illinois Music Educators Association Junior Festivals for this year. These festivals involve students selected from more than 60 schools throughout the southwestern metropolitan Chicago area. Our students prepared for and successfully completed a rigorous audition in order to be accepted into the prestigious Junior Festival Ensembles. Their tenacious work ethic and commitment to their artistry are commendable. They have each done an excellent job representing their ensembles, their middle schools, and also the entire Elmhurst District 205 community. On behalf of myself and the rest of the Middle School Music Department of Bryanburg, Ellen Gary, John Gaunt, Heather Knight, Cindy Kraus, Kim Lambert Hack, TJ Mitchell, Leah Pagonis, Lindsay Stickinger, Jessica Tadevossian, and Ricardo Vasquez, as well as the Elementary School General Music Department of Carrie Alfano, Jessica Cowger, Samantha Conanan, Tracy Lucritz, Joel Miller, Jeremy Nemec, and TJ Mitchell, we extend our proudest congratulations to each and every one of the students.
You know, the fact that the number of students that are standing up here, just the sheer number, and the even more students' names who couldn't make it tonight that I'm going to read, is no accident. Elmhurst District 205 takes our commitment to the fine arts, to music, very seriously. We are very committed, and we couldn't do it without our excellent instructional staff here tonight. So thank you to the community, to our staff, and for the hard work that all of you students So now I'm going to read a very long proclamation. Whereas, the Illinois Music Educators Association, also known as the ILMEA, is a not-for-profit professional association representing every level of music education in every discipline and exists to advocate for universal access to comprehensive music education, deliver exemplary professional development for educators, and provide outstanding musical experiences for all Illinois learners, facilitated and licensed music educators. And whereas, the ILMEA Elementary and Junior High Division held its annual District One Music Festival on Saturday, November 3rd, 2018, at Lincoln Way Central High School in New Lennox, Illinois. Recognized middle school students from more than 60 schools throughout the southwestern metropolitan Chicago for their musical accomplishments. And whereas, this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages further music study and artistry. And whereas, along with some of the most accomplished student musicians in the region, the following Elmhurst District 205 Middle School students were selected to perform in the Junior Festival Band Orchestra and Chorus Concert, or Jazz Concerts. They are, from Bryan Middle School. Peyton Burke, Alto Sax in the Band and Jazz Band. Mac Olson, who plays trumpet in the band. Joey Sherman, trumpet in the band. Sackler Tarry, am I even close? I apologize, who plays bass clarinet in the band. Casey Cortez, violin in the orchestra. Sidney Lee, violin in the orchestra. Erica Lenhart, violin in the orchestra. Quinn Olson, cello in the orchestra. Kate Davis, soprano in the chorus. Liliana Garzina? Is that close? I apologize again. Alto in the chorus. Liesel Noel, soprano in the chorus. And from Churchville Middle School, Andrea Luna, who plays flute in the band. Lauren Capuno, cello, who plays cello in the orchestra. Teagan Cullen, violin in the orchestra. Isabella Nichols, who plays the bass in the orchestra and jazz band. And Paige Greve, who is a soprannam. And from Sandberg Middle School, Michaela Sur, who plays oboe in the band. Oscar Suvalis, who plays violin in the orchestra. Clara Johnson, who plays violin in the orchestra. Ephraim Pass, who plays cello in the orchestra. Joe Pickens, who plays cello in the orchestra. Julius Sparassino, who plays cello in the orchestra. Montage Ubi, who plays cello in the orchestra. And whereas, Bryan Middle School student Peyton Burke, who plays alto sax, and Churchville Middle School student Isabella Nichols, who plays the bass, were selected to play in the Junior and Senior Jazz Band Festival held on Saturday, November 10th, 2018, at Hinsdale Central High School. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to Bryan, Churchville, and Sandberg Middle Schools, to District 205, and to our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and District 205 Band Orchestra and Choir Directors from Bryan Middle School, Bryanburg, Ellen Gary, Timothy Mitchell, Jeremy Nemec, Jessica Tadevossian, thank you. From Churchville Middle School, Cynthia Kraus, Evangelia Pagonis, thank you. Lindsay Stickinger. And from Sandberg Middle School, Matthew Cotton, John Gaunt, Heather Knight, Kim Lambert Hack, and Ricardo Vasquez for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations. Now here's what I'm going to ask you to do. Start over here. Shake everybody's hand around the table, and as you pass me, you get to shake my hand and you get your very own proclamation to read at home. Congratulations. Great job.
Okay. Next, the Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have one name, Tina Brown.
And my question before I step off. I'm reading that agenda, and I don't know how to put it in. It's not on topic here, so I don't know if I should be able to stand up and speak.
It's okay, just go ahead. Yeah, you have three minutes, and the timer will...
I'm not that windy. Not that three minutes is windy.
Okay, good. I just want to start out with a big thank you. Your jobs are not easy. There's many different opinions on any one given topic, and the weight of your decisions dramatically impacts the community. And I wanted to take just two minutes real quickly to discuss or share some of my thoughts on the size of the schoolrooms that are increasing in District 205 in general. We're on the wrong side of that trending equation. And specifically, I understand there's conversations taking place in Lincoln School where the little first graders, the four classrooms, would be consolidated into three going into second grade, which puts those little seven-year-olds and eight-year-olds into a 20-plus classroom size. So, you know, hearing that as a parent, you know that feeling you get sometimes where your heart starts to race a little bit, and you sweat, and you get the shakes, and you know there's something there about to happen, or you're feeling that there's something that's going to happen to your child, and it's just beyond your control. And so what do you do about that? You start to research it. So getting on the Internet, looking for information, which does support a smaller classroom, right? And again, I get there's a lot of challenges. So if the Internet's saying that, then where's my next resource? And that's the teachers in the community. I've grown up here. I know teachers that have taught in District 205 their whole lives. I turned to them for information. And what they shared with me was this. Tina, you've already found out that children in smaller classrooms perform better. A teacher has more one-on-one time with a student. It's easier to make sure all students are engaged and interact. Teachers build better relationships with their students. Noise levels are better. They're seven years old. They cover more material and maybe have room left over some fun, which they don't seem to have much time for now. Teachers don't consider their job a grind and draining. Therefore, it's better for your child that they enjoy being there. More teaching time with less disciplinary actions or problems also can address issues before they get out of hand. Students are less likely to slip through the cracks. All in all, the kids do better academically. And this is coming from the teachers I respect. And so I know it's a very hard decision, and I know there's so many factors beyond what we can possibly appreciate that you have to go through in making these decisions. But as a parent, and if it was your child in the school system today, ask yourself, please, in making this decision for all of us, is this the best interest of the children? And if it's not, what other considerations are on the table that could solve for the problem in lieu of increasing that classroom size? And what other options could potentially be put on the table to solve for those issues? What else can be done? You guys have that option, that choice. So please, do what you can to find a way, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Public comments? Okay, then we will move on to reports and presentations. First up is the seed grant with Ms. Trendle and Ms. Tamru.
So last fall, we were approached by the Regional Office of Education and asked about participating in a national grant that they received, and from the federal government's federal grant. And it has to do with principal leadership and practices that support school improvement. And so Christine agreed that she would like to try this out, and...
You're stealing our thunder, Dr. Moyer.
Okay, well, so actually, that's all I was going to say, is that she is, they are now here to explain to you exactly what they've been doing for the last year and a half, so...
Thank you. Yes, I'm here tonight with Christine Trendle and then Aska Limke. She is one of our superstar newer reading specialists that we were able to hire last year when there was an opening. So obviously, you know, this is the slide that you've seen very often, but you know, our mission is that our students are, all graduate college and career and/or life-ready, and we use, our belief system is that if we incorporate the six Cs into our instruction, and we provide rigor and relevant instruction to our students in the classroom, but it's also supported at our district level and in the school, we will meet that vision. And everything that we do is always directly aligned to at least one of our learning and teaching priorities. It is my belief that this grant is directly aligned to all three of our priorities, and we'll talk to you a little bit about how that fits in as we speak with you just for these few minutes this evening. So Dr. Margaret, Dr. Harrell sent us a few questions over the weekend, so I'm going to try to incorporate some of those into this slide. Last year, as Dr. Moyer touched upon, he, there is a federal grant through ISU, Illinois State University, and they partner with ROEs, Regional Offices of Education, throughout the entire state of Illinois. And Dr. Moyer is very involved in our local regional office of education, and it came to his attention that there was a spot or two for this, with this grant. And so with Christine being a new principal in our district, he asked her if she would be interested, and she, of course, is always willing to learn new things, and everybody always could use a few more thousand dollars to do something in their building. So Christine said yes to that. So that's sort of how we got involved in the grant. There are three main components of what we're responsible for doing in order to receive the grant money. Last year it was $5,000, and then this year we received $9,000. And one of the things that we do is we look at the way Christine spends her time, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more deeply in the next slide. And then Christine and Aska are going to talk about the coaching support that Christine receives as a leader, but then also the support that her professional learning community and school improvement teams receive in order to build leadership capacity within the building. So when I meet with Christine, so Aska and I are her coaches. We meet with her every day. I meet with her three days a week, and Aska meets with her two days a week. We meet for 30 minutes a day, and it's a very structured time. I know Aska's going to talk a little bit more about that. But one of the things that we really focus on is how Christine is spending her time during, throughout the day. We code it in three different ways, and then we're able to look at the data each month. So the M, I just tried to give you a few examples of each. So the M is managing staff, scheduling non-certified staff, coordinating logistics in the building. We all know, if you've been a principal, we, it is very easy to get pulled in a million different directions that are more management-directed, that don't really impact instruction in the classroom. So the big goal of this grant is to ensure that Christine is spending as much time as possible impacting instruction in the classrooms. So there's the I, the instructional leadership part. So that's where she's in classrooms observing. She's providing teachers with feedback. She's coaching teachers. And there are many other things that would fit under the instructional leadership component. And then there's the internal relations. Unfortunately, it's just a reality of being a principal. You do have human resources-type situations that have to be dealt with for certified and non-certified staff on a regular basis. So those are the three different ways that we code her time.
Okay, so the time management piece is one part of the grant, and that's a daily focus for us. The second part of the grant is really looking at building leadership capacity within Jackson, but also building my own leadership capacity. So one of the opportunities granted to us through this experience is that I have had the opportunity to go to about seven half-day trainings. Some of them have been over the summer. Many of them are during the school year, where I go to a focused training on cycles of inquiry. So cycles of inquiry is a research-based school improvement process developed by Dr. Shelby Costner out of the University of Illinois at Chicago. And when I go to these trainings, we've really focused each training on one part of the...
So that's where she's in classrooms observing. She's providing teachers with feedback. She's coaching teachers. And there are many other things that would fit under the instructional leadership component. And then there's the internal relations. Unfortunately, it's just a reality of being a principal. You do have human resources-type situations that have to be dealt with for certified and non-certified staff on a regular basis. So those are the three different ways that we code her time and.
Okay, so the time management piece is one part of the grant and that's a daily focus for us. The second part of the grant is really looking at building leadership capacity within Jackson, but also building my own leadership capacity. So one of the opportunities granted to us through this experience is that I have had the opportunity to go to about seven half-day trainings. Some of them have been over the summer. Many of them are during the school year where I go to a focused training on Cycles of Inquiry. So Cycles of Inquiry is a research-based school improvement process developed by Dr. Shelby Kostner out of the University of Illinois at Chicago. And when I go to these trainings, we've really focused each training on one part of the five-step process, which you can see the visual up on the slide. I also have an opportunity to talk about my practice of implementing this cycle with other principals across DuPage County that are participating in the grant as well. My collaboration with those other principals is not limited to the elementary level, but I have opportunities to talk to high school principals and middle school principals as well. And really, principals that work in different populations, you know, I've had great conversations with the principal of Wheaton North, some of the principals in Glendale Heights, principals from Glen Allen. And it's been a really great opportunity for me as a new principal to meet some of my colleagues from around the county. With that said, we've really, at Jackson, I've taken Cycles of Inquiry and we're really lucky here in District 205. Thanks to our wonderful leadership team, we have a very rigorous school improvement process already. Many of my colleagues across the county who are working in the cycles as well are having a little bit of a harder time connecting Cycles of Inquiry to their school improvement process. It's luckily been a really natural tie for me. We really, if you guys remember back, I think it was in October, I presented our Jackson School Improvement Draft, some of our plans and our process to you, and our process is very closely aligned to cycles. So the first step is root cause identification. So really identifying for us as a building, what is our focus going to be? What does it need to be? What are our students showing us that they need us to do differently? And then we look at how are we going to do that differently? How are we going to change the way we teach kids? We set a process and outcome goal, so how will we know that we've achieved it? What will it look like? What's the steps we're going to take to actually do this differently? We then have to enact the plan. So that's really the time where the plan is going on. And teachers are really learning about what they're going to do differently in their classrooms related to that specific problem of practice that we've identified in step one. And then step five is that reflection, regroup and readjust and you kind of go back into another problem of practice or you could look at the same problem of practice. So this is something that we've done at Jackson a couple of times. Our literacy is really our focus of our school improvement plan because we know, based on some of our subgroup data and our whole school data, that we have to move kids into reading at grade level expectations a little quicker than we have been doing. And we've really been doing that by focusing on main idea and details at all of our grade levels. That's a foundational skill with fiction and nonfiction that we have identified as a problem of practice that our kids really need to firm up before they can go into some higher-level reading skills. We've also had PLCs identify their own root cause, so looking at their own problem of practice. In our winter data reviews, when we kind of relooked at our school data, an update from the fall, which we used that fall data to draft our original plan. And in February, early January, we looked at our school updated data and many of our teams, and Aska's going to talk a little bit about this and her role in leading that school leadership team as well, but we really focused on looking at growth of students mid-year versus just looking at achievement. And that's been a really helpful step for us. And because of root cause, it kind of opened my eyes for a principal that we've been looking at achievement in a way that's a little narrow and didn't give us all the information that we need from an instructional standpoint. When we look at how students are growing, it was able to give us, we were able to get some more specific information to how students are learning versus just what they're achieving. So within Cycles of Inquiry, another part of the process for me as a principal is the coaching that I go through. So in addition to meeting with Nikki and/or Aska every day for 30 minutes, I also have bi-weekly coaching meetings with a retired principal from the state of Illinois. So she comes in and every other week we meet to talk about my school improvement team, my school improvement plan. So that's really become a living and breathing document for me as a principal. I'm constantly revisiting what that plan looks like in our day-to-day, instructionally in our classrooms, but also how it drives my decision-making and how I spend my time. And then we also focus on the Cycles of Inquiry work. Since it is a new cycle for me, I often have a lot of questions about how I can lead that process with my leadership team. My teachers have been very open to looking at data in a different way and asking lots of questions about data and thinking about what does the data tell us about kids? What do we want kids to know, to be able to do as students at Jackson School? So as readers? And then that also has gone into their PLCs. So their PLCs have been leading some of that work just for their own grade level. So when we look at things as a school, it can be a little bit more broad, but teams are taking that data and really narrowing it down to what it looks like at their specific grade level team and their classrooms every day. The other thing that this grant allows me to do is, I was thinking about this especially this morning. I never stop and say, Christine, you have to stop and think about your day and think about what you're doing. We don't have time for that. I make 30 minutes of that time every single day and I was very nervous about that when this whole grant process started because I was already feeling overwhelmed with I had so many things to do. I felt like there were times where I was struggling to get them all done, especially as a new principal. And what this has really done, it's forced me to be really reflective and it's forced me to set goals so that I'm focused and I'm targeted and I stick to what I know is important and I don't get caught up in the minutia. So the funding has been something that has been a huge gift to us. So what it's allowed us to do is PLCs are in their first formal year at the elementary level this year. And that's, PLCs has really been the vehicle for me to take Cycles of Inquiry and put them into practice at Jackson School. Our PLCs have had a little additional professional learning because of the grant. So you've heard about Cindy Harrison's work in the district with our coaches and with our PLCs. I've been able to have her come into Jackson for two days at the end of February and she's actually coming back again at the end of April. And her focus has not just been PLCs, but teacher leadership within PLCs. So we identified in the summer our PLC leaders at each grade level that would attend the initial training this past June. And she has worked with my leadership team since then to really focus on their facilitation skills of looking at data. Root cause analysis is really hard and it's something even as a leader, you can kind of go down a rabbit hole and you never know where, sometimes it's hard for me to know if I've gotten to the level of detail, that granular level that I need. And it's really hard for teachers to lead their peers in that conversation. So Cindy's really helped them focus on how to keep their PLCs focused as a teacher leader and facilitator, how to facilitate those data conversations and ask some tough questions looking at that student work together as a group. It's also allowed for me to meet with my school leadership team a little bit more often. The Cycles of Inquiry takes a little bit more time than the data process that we've used in the past. So it's allowed me to meet with my teachers, not just on Cycles of Inquiry, but on some of the other things that we meet about as well. You know, certainly Nikki alluded to management operations is a huge part of our day and while it certainly doesn't directly impact instruction, it does have implications for how our school runs. So I do sometimes need my school leadership's team feedback and input on scheduling and assessments and things like that, too. So it allows me to have time for both. Because those are, teachers get paid hourly after school to meet as a leadership team and then we usually meet once. This summer, we're probably going to meet twice because we have the money to have that time together. Something else, and Aska's going to come over and talk a little bit about this, too, but there was an amazing opportunity in, was it in January?
Yes.
In January, Aska, as not only part of this grant, but as a teacher leader at Jackson, was able to attend the Chicago Literacy Conference.
So I had the opportunity to attend the Comprehensive Literacy Conference through the grant and it's, since our focus is on literacy at our school, it provided me opportunity for all my own personal professional growth, but at the same times I was able to bring back concrete literacy strategies that's going to affect student learning. And for the second day, just happens to be Peter DeWitt was the presenter and he talked a lot about collective efficacy. And one of the school improvement plan, the goals at Jackson is collaboration also among staff. So that was really validating for us to, for me to hear about collective efficacy and how we can build that into our building. So what we did is I brought back some of the information to Christine and some of the learnings that I had from that conference and we were able to kind of shift our data review for middle of the year, just happens to be the end of January, was a perfect timing. So instead of looking at, I know she talked a little bit about looking at data differently, but we do have students that, we have a high-achieving district. We have a lot of students that are making growth, making attainment, but we really wanted to shift our lenses and looking at growth regardless of where their achievements at. So even students that are meeting grade level expectation are already making adequate growth. So then we looked at expected growth and we kind of targeted those students that are making adequate growth versus making exceeding growth versus making growth below the expected, the expectation. And by looking at that, teachers, it was like a totally different conversation. I think it made the PLC even stronger because it wasn't focused on who has a struggling kid or who needs intervention or who needs additional support from reading specialists. It was really looking at strategies within the classroom. And that's where I kind of came in and kind of shared a lot about the Comprehensive Literacy Conference and the strategies that I learned. And I was able to kind of plug that in, into the different grade level. And I think that was like a great opportunity for us to shift that focus. A lot of the teachers are using that language now about growth, not necessarily just achievement and not just focusing on one subgroup of students, but focusing on all learners and making sure that the learners are making that expected growth regardless of their achievement level.
All right. So the impact that this has had on me and on our district has been, has been pretty profound. So as I said before, it really gives me that dedicated daily time for reflection and planning. And Aska's going to talk a little bit more about that and about her role, but I can't thank Aska and Nikki enough because when I talk about that I give 30 percent, or 30 minutes a day of my time to this, they do, too. So, and they're at my door at 11:00 a.m. every day, one of them waiting for me and they make me stick to that timeframe. So I'm so appreciative for that. It really helps me focus my day-to-day work in the bigger picture. So rather than the minutia, rather than just looking at my week day-by-day, I really look at things holistically and I'm always focused on school improvement and focused on our plan. It's helped me give more regular feedback to teachers while also building a really positive culture within Jackson School. I find that not only am I more purposeful in my actions, but teachers are more purposeful in their actions. We are just really, really focused. Something that's come out of this, I've always prided myself on being very visible to teachers and to students in classrooms, but something that I do in addition to that now is I am following up with teachers at some point during the week after I've been in their classroom. And they probably don't even realize that I do this. Sometimes it's with written feedback, sometimes it's a short conversation in the hall, but if I've stepped foot in their, that classroom that week, they have heard from me. And it's celebratory. It's something great that I saw while I was in their room or an interaction I saw them had with, have with a student. It can be something that was really focused on their classroom community or instruction or anything in between, but I'm acknowledging the work of our teachers and students because it's really important. Something else that it allows for me is that continuous professional development focused on leadership. So as a new principal, I feel like I've grown so much because of this experience and not only the training that I have, those half-days on Cycles of Inquiry, the conversations I've had with principals around the county, the daily meetings where, that I have with Nikki and Aska, and they are tough. They push my thinking and I thank them for that all the time. They really do help me see things maybe that I might be missing or that I might be able to do differently or if I find that I'm not being effective at something, that I have to regroup and try something new. So I'm so appreciative for, of them for that. Really, it's also really helped my office staff grow. So Jackie Lawrence, my school secretary, has been at Jackson for a long time and she's amazing and this has made her even more amazing. She's much more thorough when she takes messages, when she greets people at the door. She's focused and finds out what it is that they need. If she can help them, if I'm not available, we don't want people at Jackson to be waiting on me. I'm the only principal in the office and if some need arises and I'm not available and my time is protected now because of the grant and Nikki and Aska ask me a lot of questions about my follow-through for things on my calendar, so I don't get pulled away. And there was an example, there was a phone call today that Jackie could have easily sent to my voicemail. We had a little bit of a disgruntled neighbor, but she handled it really well. It was a positive outcome and it's because she's had training in what questions to ask a visitor and what they need so that she can help them before everything just automatically goes to the principal's office. The district benefit is really that Nikki, Aska and I have brought our learning back. We've shared this with our principal colleagues and I've had conversations with Dr. Henderson about, and thanked her for how rigorous our school improvement process is because this has been a really natural tie to the work that I already do. A lot of my principal colleagues across the county have asked me like, how have you done all of this work with Cycles of Inquiry and kind of revamped your school improvement plan? And the reality is I really haven't had to go about my school improvement plan in a different way. It just has helped me be a little bit more focused, but root cause was already really built in our plan. So it helped me really translate root cause into daily practice for myself and for teachers so that we're constantly, you know, that cycle of inquiry, it's a cycle. You have to keep continually looking at the data and making adjustments and it's really changed my practice.
So one of the things that I have to thank Christine, Christine's been thanking me, but I feel like this has been such a humbling experience for me to be chosen to be her coach. I've learned so much from her and I know we just met when we started like this process, but as a new, as a new teacher in the district, I watched how she builds relationship as a principal and I learned so much from that. And myself, I'm going through the leadership coursework right now, so it's been, it's given me a different insight because I've had a lot of leadership experience within my grade level, within my content level, but I never saw it like a building-wide. So seeing her like work through her schedule and just kind of like problem-solve issues with us on a daily basis kind of gave me a different view of what, how to run a school, I guess. So, so thank you for that, Christine. But one of the things that so we focus on during the daily meeting when we meet is we look at her calendar together and we actually do a, kind of like a check-in first. So we look at the day before and kind of go through each item that's on the calendar and we kind of like hold her accountable for it. Did you do this? Did you do this? Why did you not do it? And if she did it, we ask her if she needs some follow-up. So if it was an instructional piece where she was meeting with her teacher or if she was doing a walkthrough, does she need follow-up with that? And at that moment, Christine's really good about that where she puts it in her calendar right away so that there's that continuous cycle of inquiry, like she was talking about, whatever the focus is. And I'm going to, I'm going to go into examples of what that looks like, but one of the things that Nikki and I do is we have her reflect. So we ask her like, are you sure this is, this is how you want to use your time? And we also make sure that it's tied to the school improvement plan. So, okay, now our focus is literacy. What can we do within literacy? What are some things that you want to look for in a teacher? So one of the things that we talked about earlier in the year was about student collaboration. That's part of our focus and we wanted to really look at that. So she went into each classrooms per grade level that she scheduled into a calendar, but per grade level to just look at trends. So she wasn't looking in there to look at instruction per se, but she was really looking at the structure of the reader's workshop to see is the structure allowing students to collaborate with each other. So that's all she was looking for. So then when she came back and talked to Nikki and I on a different days, but she, we talked about how, which grade level might need more support or more instructional strategies. And then she came up with that there wasn't enough structure in place or strategies in place. So then Christine scheduled a time with her instructional coach in our building so that we can provide professional development for teachers so that it's an opportunity for them to increase their teacher capacity. And this is where we go back to the vision in the first slide where her leadership is impacting teacher capacity and that's going to impact student learning. So, I mean, it's very, it's very online, it's very focused. I mean, this happened in the course of two days. We figured out the focus, she walked through those classrooms and the next day she already had a plan. And then we had follow-up and she'll, a couple of weeks she'll kind of go in and then we always kind of go back to it during our late starts, during our staff meetings, we always check in with teachers. And I think a lot of times teachers feel like we're throwing a lot at them and there's no follow-through, but Christine has been very focused on what the, what the priorities are and she has been very consistent and I think the staff really appreciates that because she, they know what they're expecting. So when Christine goes into the classroom, and I've been in the classroom, when I'm pushing in and Christine walks in, nothing is phased. Teacher doesn't stop, students don't stop, like they just keep working because she's so visible that it became a natural process in the building. Though where we see Christine coming in, talking to kids, taking pictures for social media purposes. So it's just been a very great experience to see how the culture has shifted and it has become more collaborative because teachers are seeing those social media posts or talking about, of course, teachers talk when Christine pops in, they all talk about it. And it's like, oh, it's not just me. She's just coming in to observe everybody else. So, and it has become very positive in a sense that we're very collaborative. You see a lot of teachers, excuse me, you see a lot of teachers talking in the hallways, you see a lot of teachers like just sharing a lot of great instructional strategies. So I think it starts with leadership and seeing Christine like just get dirty with instruction has allowed teachers to take chances and try new things. And I think, and that's her, that's her saying, so try new things. So it's been a great experience and I'm really thankful for the grant to allow me to do that. So thank you.
All right, so we just wanted to wrap up with kind of talking about where we're at and where we're.
headed. So Christine is going to continue next year, so that will be really year three.
We started in February, so I finished, I'm already in year two, so next school year will be part of the end of year two and the start of year three.
Like 2.5.
Yeah, 2.5, right.
So I will continue working with her along with Aska, and we will continue to be her LSC Lead Support Coach. And then Tim Riordan at Hawthorne is going to start the grant in July, and so he'll be a new principal participant next year, starting, as I said, in July. And then his coaches will be Effie Nassis, and then when she's not available, Dave Beatty is going to, to take that role on. So he will be a part of those daily meetings and get to have fun like we do. So that is, I know we're a little bit over time, I do apologize, but thank you so much for listening. And at this time, do you have any questions for us? Did we hit everything, Margaret?
Yes, you did.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
And I, just as a side note, I know some of you are going to be continuing on and doing other things, and I just wanted to, I've been with you for a long time, and I want to thank you for your support throughout the years that you've served on the board, and I wish you luck in your future endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a great, great presentation, and it's just neat to see all the things you're doing and building leadership at the school, you know, with your teachers too. So thanks for all your work. All right, Jim.
This sounds like a great program. Two quick questions. Nikki, you're an experienced principal. Do you think this process made you grow as a principal?
It made me grow as a district leader now that I'm not a principal anymore, because it allowed, I'm very passionate about educational leadership, and it really allowed me to be, still be in a building and be connected with Christine and get to know her in a way that I may, may not have. And to, you know, sort of, one of the things that we have to do is we have to goal-set, and I really encouraged her to make sure one of her goals was being in the classrooms and having teachers see her teach, because as an assistant principal, that was one of my biggest strengths. And then when I came to Hawthorne and I didn't have a coach, I didn't have an assistant, I really got away from that instruction, or from that, that hands-on in the classroom teaching, and I'm, I'm sad for myself that I did that. Now I'm doing more of that again in this role, and so I really encourage Christine because she's so strong with classroom practice, to make sure she doesn't lose that. So yes, I've learned a lot. I think we've learned a lot together.
Yeah, I, I think I phrased my question incorrectly, but you did answer the right question.
I've been with you, I got you.
Thank you. I know, we're, we're here. I mean, this seems like a, a great program.
Yeah, it is.
And people certainly work better when they're in a team and, and, and thinking about what they're doing on a day-to-day basis, and I see where as a principal, you can easily get dragged down into the minutia, and, and that's not moving the school forward.
Right.
I mean, this sounds like an absolutely great program. Do, do we have a plan to, to roll this out to every principal eventually?
Well, Tim's going to get involved next year, and I think that some of the informal pieces are embedded in the instructional round work that we do, or the collaborative principal meetings, EC5 and things like that, when principals are working together and sharing. The goal was to take some of these learnings and then be able to help coach some of the other principals on, on, on how they can effectively accomplish what they're trying to accomplish, which is to be in classrooms and lead instruction. So I think that some of that will start to become more formalized when we go through the next round of the school improvement planning and the next round of planning for what our principal leadership meetings look like. But I think it has been occurring informally, I don't know if you have any specific examples, but.
Jim, did you plus code it?
Yeah, I have done a little mini-training a few times for the other elementary principals on the calendar piece, so just how this has helped me manage my time and schedule time to do things that, for example, I never used to schedule times to do like office work, to check in on email or do paperwork that I know I have, but this allows me sometimes to schedule time to do that. When I'm like, ooh, I have a little bit of time on Thursday afternoon, I'm going to dedicate it to some of the deadlines I know that are approaching and get some paperwork done. And it also helps me really focus on instruction by scheduling in some of those management pieces and not procrastinating and waiting until they, I have to do them, and that becomes my priority. So I've had, I have talked to principals. One other principal has tried some of the calendar coding and kind of collecting his own data for how he spends his time, but I, I would say it's given principals a lens of the reality. So when I started this grant, I had a, a data collector follow me around for two full days and collect my data for what was management, what was instructional, what was personal. I mean, she clocked when I went to the bathroom, when I had a personal conversation with a teacher whose kids were just sick. I mean, everything was, was in there. And I was like really discouraged and sad by the amount of time I spent on instruction. I was like, I rocked it. You know, it's going to be like 70%, not, not even close. So it was really humbling, and they were both sitting with me at the table when I got that data, and it was really, really hard to look at the reality that I thought was, it was eye-opening. So this has really changed who I am as a leader, not just in terms of being more effective at my job, but I also like it a lot more because I'm not getting bogged down in the minutia. Like, I hope Dr. Moyer knows I still meet deadlines and I'm still getting all that other stuff done, but I'm in classrooms a lot more. I actually taught an acceleration block for fifth grade all of first trimester. Every day from 1:25 to 1:55, I was in a fifth grade class, and I had seven fifth graders that I did some intervention with. Because it fit into my calendar, I scheduled it in every day. Occasionally, I had to cancel or shift some things around, but it was a huge priority, and it was a goal of the grant at the time that I tried to do some actual instruction with kids. So I reached out to my fifth grade team, they very quickly assigned me a group of seven. And so doing some of the work that we were talking about in our PLCs and at our staff development with the teachers, and even that teacher has said, like, it pushed her practice forward because I would see her do things, she would see me do things, we were kind of co-teaching in a classroom, and we learned from each other. And that teacher this year was like, I'd really like for you to observe me in math because I feel like you've seen me teach literacy every day, and I really want some feedback on math. So it's, it's fostered more specific relationships with teachers too.
Thank you. Yeah, Dave, I couldn't encourage you enough. I mean, after year two of this, it sounds like you're going to have a core group of people that have experience to roll this throughout every principal in the district. It, it sounds like it's a tremendous growth opportunity.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was, I thought Christine was an appropriate person for this because I knew the challenges that she was going to be up against, and, and she's a learner, and I, I just, when we were approached, I wanted to support and cooperate with the ROE, but I also wanted to figure out what the best way was to leverage our experience. And, you know, it was, it was a little bumpy at times, and.
Still is.
You know, working through some stuff, but it, it is nice to see that they have moved through and gotten to the point where it's, it's really, they've been able to identify the impact on their, on their building.
It sounds as though it'd be good across the district too, as well as helping your leaders in the building. So, you know, what you have learned, you know, help them, and it just trickles down.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Okay, next up is Next Generation Science Standards. Mr. Beatty.
So by way of introduction here, Beatty's going to talk a little science goal. Nobody got that, apparently.
I'm setting my timer, because otherwise I'll go over and then I'm in trouble.
Actually, I was not making fun of you, I was making fun of Nikki, but nobody, oh, okay.
No, I was like, what is going on all this time? Good evening. Well, first I have to apologize, I thought I was somehow going to present on like Monday for some reason, and that's why, that's, I don't, I have no idea what was going on there. So it's actually not the eighth, it's the ninth. But we're talking about Next Generation Science Standards, specifically what we're doing to change our curriculum in order to meet these standards. So what we're going to talk about this evening is a little bit of what exactly that means, and then what is it that we're doing in District 205 to meet the Next Gen Science Standards, which are not new. These are, these were formally adopted in, in the state of Illinois in 2014, I believe, 2014 or 2015. It's been a few years. But what I will say to start things off is that many districts claim to meet, to be meeting Next Gen Science Standards. And, and I can say I've, I know the people that work in these other districts, and behind closed doors, they are honestly saying, we're not really meeting the Next Gen Science Standards. And some of the things that we're going to look at here were some of the reasons why. It is a very tall order to meet the expectations in our science standards, and it's taken us some time to get where we are now, and it's going to take us some more time to get where we need to be, but I do fully expect us to, to fully implement and meet the Next Gen Science Standards over the next few years. So with that, let's go on to the, the vision slide. So, I mean, one of the things about Next Gen Science is it really, and we're, I'm going to say NGSS probably once or twice, because I just say it all the time, and when I say NGSS, Next Gen Science Standards, that's what that means. But Next Gen Science is the six Cs, I mean, the practices of science that we talk about in Next Gen Science, we have dimensions that we think about, the three dimensions, and we've got practices and core content ideas, and we've got cross-cutting concepts. And the practices of science are the six Cs. I mean, we've got creating models, we've got asking questions, all the things that I see in the six Cs that are connected directly to what we're doing in Next Gen Science. And Next Gen Science curriculum development is really district-level support to provide a more rigorous and relevant education for students. So as we move through it, we're already at the classroom level in certain places. We have some people piloting some of the things that we've been building, so we are connecting up with students already, but I, I fully expect us to do more and more of that and be fully connected up with all of our students in the next couple of years. So learning, teaching priorities, Next Gen Science curriculum development is directly connected to developing curriculum resources and assessments in key content areas. So that is what we're working on for Next Gen Science curriculum for the big picture here. So what are some of the shifts? These are just a small selection of some of the things that are changing as a result of Next Gen Science Standards. I mean, and, and I can speak from my own experiences, as I was a high school science teacher myself. I worked in Nutria, I worked at Lake Forest, I worked in Colorado, I taught in all sorts of different kinds of classrooms. But I think I barely got out of this left-hand column when I myself was teaching science because most of my colleagues weren't getting out of this left-hand column. And, and I think the vast majority of science education that takes place in this country really lives in this left-hand column, which is a lot of rote memorization. I can tell you, I had a plant biology class in college that all we did was memorize lists. It was literally like, this is a list of seven things, here's the list of nine things, here's the list of 14 things. We got to the test, there were seven blanks, I put the list of seven things in that one, the 11 things in this one, and the 14 things in that one. And that is what a lot of science education is. It's a lot of memorizing stuff and you filling in blanks. And we want to move way beyond that. And I, and, and I'm not saying in any way that what we're currently doing in our schools is that what I just described, but we want to move even farther away from any situations where we're just asking kids to memorize things and fill in blanks. Because what we really want is for kids to actually discover science ideas by doing science, and that is really what Next Gen Science is all about, is really about planning out instructional frameworks such that students are asking the questions, students are coming up with what investigations they want to do, and students are answering their own questions through, through those investigations, and they're putting the science ideas, the big important ones, together themselves. So instead of learning disconnected ideas, we're actually doing that work, we're connecting all these things up in the classroom, the students are doing the modeling and explaining. We're using phenomena, which I'll talk about in a second, as a, as a key cornerstone to that. And we're also moving in a direction where there's less teachers delivering information to kids. A lot of science classrooms is a teacher talking about science. This is what the science is, kids. Here's the thing you have to write down in your notes, write it in your notes, memorize that, put it on the test. Instead of that, we're going to start asking students to actually create those ideas from the investigations that we're doing in class. So other differences, things like assessments, a lot of the science assessments look like what you see above in the, in the traditional box where we're filling in a multiple-choice question. I think you could find examples of this in our district of multiple-choice items that are literally, do you know the definition of this thing? Whereas what we really want, what we're really interested in is kids, can kids use the powerful science ideas that they've developed in the classroom to actually explain something in their world? So in the instance here, your brother's parked, car is parked in front of the office supply store downtown, his stereo is cranked up so loud you can hear it from inside the store. Using what you know about sound, explain why the store windows are rattling. And so what we want students to do is actually draw models, show what is happening, why the windows are vibrating, what is causing that to happen, not just, well, there's sound and the windows are vibrating. Ta-da. Like what's actually happening? What's going on between the speaker and the window rattling? Why is the window moving? And explain that. Draw the picture, show what's going on, use the powerful science ideas that you've learned, not just, well, I know that wavelength and frequency are linked in this mathematical formula, so tell me what the wavelength is, and I'll tell you what the frequency is. And that's all we can do, like, that's not very powerful. It doesn't help us explain anything in our world. So what we're trying to do is, is give students those powerful ideas, let them build them so they can explain their world. So what does that look like? All right. So this would be an example of phenomena. It's going to be kind of quiet, it's a little video. But this would be example of something we would call anchoring phenomenon, which might be the beginning of a unit where, so, please pause for me one second, Dave.
Oh, you said I could.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm in a, okay, so, so what we're doing here, something like this might be set up in the classroom. In fact, we've done this, and instead of having an actual record player, we take a lazy Susan, we put a record on top of it, and then we, we just slowly turn it around, and then we do the same thing that this gentleman is doing, which is create a paper cone, stick a needle through it, and then, go ahead and, all right. All right. Yep. And so when we do that with students, first off, students don't know what the heck of record players typically. So they look at that like piece of plastic, and they're like, what is going on here, right? But we have them stand around, and this actually, there's the record player right here. So we have them stand around, and they're looking at it, and they're like listening, and then we let them play with it. We're like, okay, well, what questions, like, now that you've seen it, like, what questions do you have? Oh, well, what happens if you go backwards? Okay, try it. What happens when you go backwards? What happens if you speed up? Okay, try that, speed up, try. So what we're, it's, kids are asking questions, and they're conducting their own investigations about, they're investigating what this thing, what, what is going on with this thing? When I do this, what happens? When I do that, what happens? It's also engineering because it's connecting up with this one in particular with human technology, and so they're actually going to reverse engineer a record player through this process. And so as we're seeing the students and they're interacting with this phenomenon, then we, and they're observing and taking all these notes, they start asking all these questions, they start then connecting their, yeah, they start making connections and making sense out of what's going on. And through the course of this unit, as kids are asking questions and conducting new investigations and connecting those investigations to other things in their lives, they start building really powerful ideas about what sound is, how does it work, how is it generated, how does it travel, how does your ear perceive sound? And then they can use those ideas in real situations in their lives to explain things like, well, how come when my mom and dad are yelling in the other room, but the doors are all closed, I can still hear them? But there's no, like, there's no room, there's no way for that sound to travel. But they start to be able to explain that phenomenon. Or when I'm under the water and yelling, and someone else is under the water, they can hear me, but the people outside of the water can't really hear me, what's going on there? Or other sorts of things that have to do with sound that I bet many of us would struggle with explaining what those, how those things actually work with the science ideas. Those are the things we want kids to be able to do. That's what Next Gen Science is, and that's what we're trying, that's what we're moving towards. So we've been building units. This would be an example of a student models that we're, we're creating, models we're creating with students as a, as a class, identifying with question marks, what don't we understand yet? We really don't know what's going on here. We don't know what's going on here. We think we, we know what this is, we think we know how that works, but we got, we got questions, we got to answer investigations to do. So what does it look like? So what does it look like in the classroom? So this would be an example, this is actually from our classrooms, this is an example from Bryan Middle School, one of our department chairs, science department chair at Bryan, Mrs. Glay. So she is built, she helped her team, her seventh grade team, build a unit. And that unit is around the anchoring phenomenon of this particular flame. So she actually, the first, the first thing that they do in this class for this unit is she burns a flame that has all these different colors. And the kids are asking questions about, why are there different colors? Usually when I burn a candle, there's just, it's just the one color. But now you're burning this thing in front of me, and we got green and red and yellow and all these different colors, what's going on here? And they start asking questions, same process, they're asking questions, come up with, what else could we do? How else could we interact with this? And, and creating their own investigations. And at the end of that process, they start creating models. And, and a science model is a predictive model. It has power and explanation. It's supposed to tell us something. It's not just, here's a cell, here's all the components and name them. Well, that doesn't tell us, we can't do anything with that. Like, what, what powerful thing, what, what can you explain with the model of a cell? Not very much. But what you, what you can do with this is you can start to explain, okay, well, if I put this in, this particular chemical compound, which they actually figured out what these chemical compounds were in seventh grade science, if I put this compound with this compound together, what am I going to see when I burn it? So this helps explain predictively what could happen if you start to do different things. Helps you explain the world, in this case through chemistry. There's another model, same class, but also showing that there's a diversity of the way that we're actually creating our models. And different students are doing it in slightly different ways, and that's actually okay as long as the science is sound and the, and the ideas are still there. So that was from Bryan. What are we actually doing? So we have 41 teachers currently involved, that's K-12. We have 12 buildings involved, nine instructional coaches, seven specialists include reading specialists, special ed teachers, and we also have four, all four of the science department chairs, and three middle schools and a high school department chair, all involved. In terms of timeline, so we started this work in 1718, and we really just picked, that year we picked teams and started the tiniest little bits of professional development for our 612 teams. So our 612 team started last year. This year, and throughout last year, we've been training those 612 teams to really get them ready to be building their own units. So we built units in the summer, the beginnings of the unit, and then we've been piloting those this year in our 612 classrooms. So our, our 612 teams have been piloting those units in their classrooms, so units like the one we saw with the flame, they've been piloting them. We've also been working on six, on proficiency scales at the sixth grade level because of standard-based reporting coming in at sixth grades, that's something that curriculum development teams do. And we've also put together our K-5 teams, and we're going to be training those K-5 teachers starting this summer. Next year, in 1920, we're going to be creating reporting scale, reporting standards and proficiency scales for our seventh grade teams, because we'll be moving standard-based grading up into seventh, seventh grade. We'll also be looking at resources. One of the struggles with next gen science is that it seems like it's been on a while. And if you think about it, it's been up about five years in terms of adopted by Illinois. But the reality is, is the resources that publishers have been putting out have not caught up with the standards. A lot of publishers say they're in next gen science aligned, they'll stamp it on their, on their materials, but there are third-party entities that have been evaluating materials, and nine times out of 10, they're like, no, that, that's not next gen science aligned. It's a very different way of instructing students. So we're lucky in that just this, basically this spring, we've seen some promising resources crop up, especially at the K-5 level, but also at the middle school level. And so we're looking to be able to speed up our timeline. We thought it was going to take a lot longer building single units and piloting them and getting them going and taking, taking our time. But it looks like we're going to be able to, to jumpstart that a little bit faster with some of the resources that are coming on the market. Great Minds, which is the same company that does Eureka, math, they're, they are producing science materials that look promising. Amplify Science is another one. And so we're, we're really hopeful that those things are going to help us speed things up because we, we want to get next gen science to our kids as quickly as possible. So we, we think that's going to be happening, and we're going to, our teams are going to start meeting with those publishers soon, this summer. Then in 2021, is when we hope to have implementation K-12, in terms of actually in every classroom, K-12, next gen science aligned. So training is going to have to take place, we've got that on the, on the timeline between 2021 as well, for, especially for K-5. We're going to be training all of our 612 teachers this summer, so that all of them are ready to implement the, the first unit. In terms of CDT members, here's our list, these are our 612 folks, the starred four are department chairs. So a selection of teachers from Sandberg, from Churchill, from Bryan, and from York. And then these are our K-5 science CDT members that will start meeting this summer and get trained. And then the starred folks are our specialists, including librarians, instructional coaches, special ed, reading specialists, we've got a little bit of a selection of everyone there because we want, we actually have a lot of special ed teachers, which is fantastic. We also have EL specialists, but the, the special ed is key to make sure we're building in those supports from the beginning. And that's all.
All right, thank you. Questions? Jim?
Dave, it seems whenever you present, I ask a lot of questions. And I want to assure you, it is not you, it is what we're asking you to implement.
Great, no, that's great.
Your presentation here made me feel a lot better because when I first was introduced to the next gen science standards a few years ago, I, I was afraid that what we were going to ask every kid to do was sit under an apple tree and discover gravity and figure out its processes. And then I thought nuclear fission really bothered me in, in that process. But, but it seems, so I like the reverse engineering concepts, right? I struggled through engineering school, but when my daughter was three and she asked me why the sky was blue, I was ready for. So, but it seems like we're trading here, the self-discovery, which is great because it sticks with the kid. And that, your question about, you know, why the windows are rattling, that they really have to understand, they, they just can't plug and play in the equation. And hopefully, we're not making them memorize equations because it's all on their cellphone. Using them is, is the much richer part, so I do appreciate that. But it seems like that takes a whole lot longer than the teacher standing up in the front of the room saying, hey, here's what's been discovered in the last 3,000 years. And, you know, some of it's on the test. But discover 3,000 years of science by yourself, so what are we trading? That's a long way to ask, what are we trading off?
Totally.
In this new curriculum?
So there's a couple of things going on. One, if you looked at Illinois science standards before next gen science came out, you would like, essentially when science teachers looked at them, they just were like, okay, well, I guess I'll do this, I'll do this, I'll do this, and I'll do this. Because there's no way we can do all of the things that are in here. So at no point in time has it been possible to actually learn everything that's in the Illinois science standards. What next gen has done is consolidated those ideas into the most powerful science ideas. And, and essentially established a hierarchy. And if you look at the standards, it's, it's organized that way. So you can see the disciplinary core ideas are organized into four main categories. And so those four categories then have some subdomains, and you can keep drilling down into sort of grade-level versions of each of those subdomains. But you can also look at the standards as a sum total and see like, what are the really powerful ideas in science that help kids explain what's going on in their world? And cut out some of the ideas that aren't that powerful, but maybe we've loved to teach, you know, for years and years and years. So that's really the, the balance is, yes, you have to teach less, but you focus on what's powerful and what the kids really need to know. The other side of that, that thing is something that you also mentioned, which was, you can look up facts on your phone. So it's really about, can you use that information to do anything with? Can you do something with that information? If you know the big ideas, the little ideas all fit into the big ideas. So if you can use big ideas about sound, like how, how does, how is sound made? Like when you bang on something, what, and it makes a sound? What's, what is happening? Why, why does, why is there a sound? How does it travel? Those kinds of ideas translate to all sorts of different scenarios, whereas some of the other things we used to use like, you know, here's a wave, here's the wavelength and the frequency. And like, understanding though, that model, that's not even what a wave, like, that's not even a wave, that's just a model somebody drew to represent something about this phenomenon in the world. It doesn't help us explain much in our experience. If you're a, you know, someone who's like a sound engineer, and that, that's something you would need to know, but that's something you can learn later. So it's really drilling down to what are the most powerful ideas, and focusing on those, and making kids discover those. It also doesn't mean the teacher never tells the students anything. There are times when there are powerful ideas we want the kids to uncover, but there are smaller pieces to that that we're just going to give them on the road to it, because it's not me, it's not useful for us to make kids discover every little detail, if that makes some sense.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And then what does that look like when you get to high school?
The same. And we're actually starting to do that already. We have teams at all, at physics, chemistry, and biology, and all of them are piloting units this year in their classrooms. So they're doing similar kinds of things in the, the same way, where we're identifying what are the powerful ideas, and make sure kids deeply understand those and can use those to explain phenomena. So it looks, it, it looks very similar.
I mean, I.
More sophisticated.
It, it gives me a lot of comfort when you said that, you know, we're, we're going to fill in some of the details for these kids.
Some. But, but the kids can fill them in too. Like for this particular sound one, like, we're not going to go get an electron scanning microscope to try to see what's happening in between the, the needle and the record. Like, we're not going to, we, we're not going to need to go and do that research because we can literally just search for, what does the needle and record look like, you know, on the internet, and pull up a picture that someone else has taken. And so we can just look at it and be like, oh, that's what it looks like. So we can shortcut a lot of those processes just by using the resources that we have around us. Same goes for like, you can look up videos on YouTube of how, like, not, not so much like, well, how does Bill Nye explain it? But more like, can we actually see, see it firsthand and have that ability to see it firsthand? And there's so many opportunities for that that exist on the internet, that we don't need to do all these investigations necessarily in the classroom. So we shortcut some things that way as well.
I'm done, but I have to, I have to question, you know, are there enough vinyl records left in the world?
They're, they're still making them.
They're making a comeback there.
Yeah, they're still making them. Audio files love those things.
All right, Dave, I am excited. I am probably one of those kind of science geeks that loves this application. Very excited about the concept. And devil's always in the detail, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions about implementation.
Sure.
Okay. Now, I, the great news is, I know that you have implemented curriculum before. So you know some of the lessons learned and, and some of the places to look through here. So one specific question, and maybe just a general question. The specific question, good news I heard was that there, sounds like there might be some, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call it textbooks, whether they're online or, or, or hard copy, coming out. And that is, that would be ideal. If those don't materialize like we think they might, what are some of our options?
So what I expect to happen is to, and, and the, so I've done some, some of the preliminary research with, with these different resources, you know, gotten samples and all that stuff. I, I believe we're going to be able to pull full units from these, from publishers. I don't know if it's going to solve every one of our curricular needs, but I do think that it's going to shortcut our process in a way that is really beneficial in terms of time. Like, we may have to develop one or two units, but we might be able to pull in three directly from the publisher so that by 2021, we're hitting the ground with four brand-new units and implementing them in the classroom. We may still have one or two that we're modifying from the past and still building and fixing at that point, possibly. If, I would say that would be worst-case scenario, K-8. Six, or 912 is a slightly different story. First, I think we, that we actually have some working groups in Illinois that are working on 912 curriculum right now. And one actually at LT, there's a, some really promising stuff coming out of, of, of a group that's working through there. And I would say that our biology group at York is already implementing some of the things coming out of that group. So I think while there aren't very many published materials at the, at the 912 level that really meet NGSS, we have a lot of really good resources in the state that are working on that problem. And I, and so I think we're going to be able to move on those in a similar timeframe. It may not be quite as fast as the K-8, but I do expect in, in, at the timeline that I've got set up, that we will be very close to full implementation even at the high school.
So that was great. You led me right to my second question. K through 12, 2021, so that is two years?
Two years.
Two years. Now, if I walk through here, we've got some sample implementation, seventh grade, middle school.
Every grade, 612, 612, we've got samples going, yep.
Okay, all right, great, 612. So, and K-5, we're starting, planning on starting next year.
We're, so I'm pulling, the team's first meeting is right when we get out of school this year.
Okay.
And so we're going to be training for multiple days in the summer. And we're going to start meeting with the publishers and those teams very soon after that.
Okay.
So by the end of the summer, I expect the K-5 group to be like, starting to orient with which direction we might be taking with some of the published materials. And I, and I expect us to be piloting some of those materials next year in some of our K-5 classrooms, so that by 2021, we'll be training teachers, all of our K-5 teachers over the course of that time period. So by 2021, we'll be implementing that new curriculum with those materials then.
All right. I appreciate all of that additional detail. Feedback thus far from those teachers who have implemented 6 to 12, how is that being?
So I can say that the last time I met with, so Mary Beth is one of the department chairs, so I meet with them monthly at, at the very least. Last time we met, she was, she was one of the ones at the beginning that I feel like was like, really? Is this really going to, like, is this really going to work? Like, are kids really going to discover these things on their own? Like, really, this is going to happen? And I can say that when she got to this place and her kids were making these models, she was like, oh, yes, they are, and this is not, like, this is not as big a hurdle as I thought. So I, so of the, it takes time for people to go through it. I like, one of the things Dr. Moore likes to say, you got to live it, you got to, you got to be in it, and then you might start to believe it. And I think that's the case with this in a lot of ways. We're going to have some teachers who are like, this is never going to work, I don't know what you're even trying to do here. But the vast major, I've got a lot, all, a lot of teachers on the other side of that equation that are like, I can't wait to get started with this. And so I think as we start to build momentum and we start to see what's happening in classrooms, and we get those teachers who are still on the, I'm not really sure about this side, into the classrooms, or the other ones, to see the kids like really discovering these things on their own, and the levels of conversation. And honestly, like, like we were talking about before, the content is, is powerful, but you can look it up. What's really the most important thing out of this is, can kids actually use that information? Can they make evidence-based decisions? Because there's a lot of evidence out there that we're not doing that very well as a society right now. And so I think that, like, we got to get better at looking at evidence and justifying, like, is this good evidence? Why is it good evidence? And using that evidence to actually make good decisions. And so I think the underlying theme to all of this is, are we And so I think the underlying theme to all of this is are we teaching kids to do that? And that's what science is all about. And so that, that's like the underlying theme from all of it is to make sure that we're doing that. And I think, and our science, science teachers all buy into that idea. And so as soon as they start seeing kids doing that in the classroom more often, they all jump in and they're like, I want more of that, whatever that is, give me that. Cause we want to do more of that, more of that in the classroom. Cause that's really what we want to see from students.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
So I can see science content, teachers being able to do this. How, help me understand from a elementary school, when the teachers are teaching every content.
Sure.
How they're going to get to this place?
So the resources we'll have for elementary will be a very different kind of, they'll be much more in the way of support in those resources for our elementary teachers. We're going to have to spend time with those teachers to, to get them up to speed with the science content. First off, because some of that's going to change. NGSS puts the content in different places in, in the grade span than we've had in the past. And purposely because we want early, we want young kids to be interacting with things they can see, taste, smell and hear and touch. Like abstract science ideas that they can't do that to are very difficult for those younger kids to actually come to grips with. So now I've forgotten your question. Yeah, so, okay. So for our, for our, for our K five teachers, we're going to have to spend a lot of time with them is a part of it. But the other side of it is, is that we're actually asking them to do similar things in math. We're asking them to, to give kids opportunities to discover math ideas through the problems that the kids are encountering in the Eureka materials. And so there's a lot of connect, and, and social studies is the same way. We're going to ask kids to discover those ideas through the, through the readings that they're going to do, through the videos they watch. And so there's a lot of connections there. Another thing we're going to do in science curriculum development is connect up the, all of our, you know, what would be science time, which isn't that much during the school day. But we need to connect that up with, especially with literacy and with math. So that kids are doing science content reading during their literacy block. That's connected to the science that they're doing during the science time. So we might be doing some investigation during science, but then tomorrow, the kids have identified already that like, oh, we need to learn more about magnets. Okay, well then tomorrow, that's what we're going to read about. We're going to read about magnets. So it's all connected up together. But I do anticipate that we're going to have to spend time with, with teachers to, to continue to work on this. And it's not going to be something where it's like, all right, we're going to do a day training in the summer and then everybody's ready to go, all right, you guys are ready, everybody's ready, let's do this. It's more like we get people started and then we train instructional coaches and make sure they're clear on what's going on. We talk, we, we make sure principals are clear with, with how this looks, what this looks like in the classroom. So we can provide that on the job training and on the job support that teachers need. And we'll also do follow-ups. We also do, we'll do D two, a five university courses like we do for math right now. So I anticipate all of those things kind of coming together. It's not going to be just, you know, a day training or something like that.
I can't see this happening in a day.
No.
And I don't know how you look at 20, 20, 21 for everybody to be there. So I mean, it'd be interesting to, to see more of how is that going to translate into how you deploy it? And you've done it with Eureka math. But the other piece, it sounds as though the instructional coaches are going to move, they move from technology to ELA, math, now science. But where, where are our employees with all of those subject areas, you know, and what we've already asked them to implement? So, you know, those are the sorts of things that I think that we need to be aware of and in touch with and actually working with ahead of time. Because it sounds as though there has to be core foundational things that you do have to present. Because the students, yes, they're going to be creative, but they're, they're in school. So for us to teach them as well, it's not just everything's intuitive. You know what I'm saying? So there's, you know, there's foundational things that, that the teachers will have to provide. Have, you know, materials, the whole thing. And then how do you get the students there? Some students will get there earlier than others.
Sure.
But how do we bring them all along?
Sure. And I would say in the, in the science classroom, it, when you take something like this record player that we saw earlier and you put it in front of a group of students and you see what kinds of questions they ask, what kinds of investigations they come up with. And then you take that same record player and you put it in front of a different group of students. And you might anticipate, oh, they're going to come up with totally different things. Cause it's a different group of kids. You'd be surprised at how similar the kinds of questions and investigations they create each time you put that same phenomenon in front of a group of students. There will be some slight differences, but a lot of it will, and we've got experience doing this now. There's a lot of connections between what the kids do. So what happens is we plan all that out in advance. It's, it feels to the kid like they're discovering everything and they're making the decisions and they're coming up with the questions and they're creating the investigations. But since we've done this before, we know what questions they're going to ask. We know what investigations they're going to want to do. And we've planned that out all ahead of time. So it's not like we're, we're doing this open inquiry where we're just all chasing rabbits in the room. It's literally just, we've done it before, the teachers have all, you know, after the first year. But the materials we'll provide them will already have been piloted by many people, including our own people. And so we'll know this is what's going to happen. And everything is, those things are planned out. So it's not, I think it is, it seems very overwhelming at the beginning. But then once you've gone through it a couple of times, like, like Mrs. Glay, you see how connect, like you see how it's, it's not as overwhelming as it seems at the outset. So I think the materials we're going to provide, the training, the coaching is going to, and I think teachers will be really excited about it. Our K five staff are chomping at the bit to move on science.
That's a point I wanted to make. They've realized that our, our teachers themselves have realized for a while now that our science curriculum is just not what it needs to be at the elementary level. And, and so they actually, they want to move on this. And we, we slowed this up a little bit at the elementary level because we knew that the workshop model and, and some of the other things that, that the capacity would, we would not have had the organizational capacity to keep moving. But the teachers recognized the need, so that's one battle he won't have to fight.
But we, I take it very seriously that like, we're going to need a lot of support.
I, I like the way you're rolling out, but this is the best kind of learning, especially for science. And I have to say, as a parent who's graduating a senior who literally asked to please improve the science since she was in first grade, thank you.
Your best.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thanks. Okay, technology committee update and 2019, 20 tech plan. Dr. Cohen and David Smith.
We were led up by Nikki and Christine. Middle, uh, middle relief was done by Dave Beatty. I'm here to set up the eighth inning. Chris is going to be the, be the closer. And it looks like we are just like a baseball game on track for about a three hour event. So we'll try to keep this moving. The MLI project or the mobile learning initiative started in 2012 with a bunch of pilots that were expanded over the course of three years. Chromebooks were selected and in 2015, Chromebooks were purchased and implemented one, on a one-to-one ratio, six, 12. And then over the last three years, we've started to roll those devices down one-to-one across the district. And finally, we're one-to-one completely this year, except for kindergarten where we decided on a two-to-one ratio with iPads. And so now that the MLI project is sort of wrapped, the technology committee this year got together to talk, look at what's next. And so what we're here to talk about is a little bit of, of some of what we discussed and the information that came from those representatives. Where this is most relevant is the last bullet or the, the last learning and teaching priority. The entire idea of concept of technology in a classroom is there to support learning. It's there to support what we do in, in setting, designing learning experiences that are rigorous and relevant and that supports students' development of the six Cs. I wanted to begin by just highlighting the 51, the names of the 51 members of the committee. This committee was voluntary. Not everybody came to every meeting to be certain, but we had a lot of different input from all levels of the organization, from teachers, instructional coaches, librarians and other specialists, district office staff, technology staff, and even a board member. So thank you very much Karen for, for all you did to represent the board on the group. Again, our outcomes are the six Cs, communication, critical thinking, et cetera. And technology helps us get there. It supports the learning that we have in our classrooms. And we have to provide the support at the building and district level to develop these outcomes in the classrooms. And of course rigorous and relevant learning experiences are the key to getting those six Cs out in front of us, to getting those six C skills into our students' toolbox. We are fortunate enough, we've had a relationship with Eric Sheninger and he was working with the high school this year. And he did share this graphic with us and it's an example of technology used by quadrant. And we talked about quad D learning or having rigorous and relevant instruction with rigor on the vertical axis and relevance on the horizontal axis. While this is very small, it's very challenging to see on these displays. You know, we have examples of not only things that, you know, verbs that describe what students are doing when they're learning in these different quadrants, but also some technology tools that can be useful for reinforcing that learning. So, you know, if we're talking about quad D learning, there are tools listed for animation and blogging, modeling and designing that lead to students being able to create, predict, argue and evaluate. So they are tools to a higher order set of skills. But it's important to note that technology accelerates learning and is not a driver of what is that we do in the classroom. Just because a student is making a video does not mean it is a rigorous or relevant experience. It's about the learning, learning design. It's also important to know that the tasks that students are doing are going to change. The technology education that our students are getting today is not the technology education that I got or anybody in here received. I remember programming in BASIC back in the 1980s on an Apple IIe. That the skill does not serve me well today. Right, but the idea though, that there is a set of, of commands that A leads to B. And if you, you know, you make a choice at a certain point and you can go to C or D based on that choice, that's the fundamental principle of coding. What we do for coding looks very different today than it did in the 1980s, but the concepts are still the same. And it is a literacy skill. You know, the last time, I ask you, I think, when was the last time you learned something? You had to teach yourself something. I had to learn how to fix the ice maker on my refrigerator. Right, so I, my wife found the part online and we, and I replaced the ice maker and I went to YouTube and I taught myself how to take apart my Kenmore refrigerator and put the ice maker on. And our students learn very much the same way. So there is a group called ISTI. It's the International Society for Technology and Education. And they have a set of standards or set of outcomes that they believe students should have as they, you know, go through school. We, I put that list next to the six Cs, which we've adopted as our definition of future-ready learners. And you may see the overlap, citizenship on both columns, creativity or links with designing, collaboration, critical thinking and communication. So they, these two sets of standards dovetail very, very nicely. These are the standards for students. We've, we talk about the six Cs as our outcome. So we did not spend, it's a technology committee, a lot of time looking necessarily at these standards because the six Cs, as they get woven into our curriculum are part of everything we do. What we did do though is focus a lot on the educators. We focused a lot on what it is that we need to be doing as, as teachers in the district in order to get those skills into the experiences that we plan for students. And these, these seven standards for educators, we spent two meetings on reflecting on what we do well and what we need to do better. But, and also what are the necessary conditions in order to be able to do these things as educators? For example, as a learner, we talked a little bit about the fact that when we first started the MLI program, we had instructional technology coaches. And they started off at grades six through 12. And as the instructional coaching program has evolved, now we have instructional coaches that not only support technology, but support all different forms of pedagogy. And so what we do in, what we have is we have a little bit more skill at our grade six or 12. A, because they have had more time. And B, they had more specific technology instruction. You know, my position was created from Kathy Baker's position when she retired in instructional technology. Well, we didn't have devices at, at grades K through four when Kathy Baker retired. So we recognize the need for more in technology and learning woven into our staff development. And so that's going to be something that we're going to, going to work on in the coming years. And it was also feedback from our folks in the committee. As leaders, having the ability, teachers have the ability to, to share with one another the confidence to let others into their classroom and show what they're doing and how it's an example of where we want to go. As a digital citizenship is something we talked about quite a bit and trying to get a little bit more coherence to the curriculum and more of a scope and sequence of what we want for outcomes in K 12. Teachers as collaborators, you know, we focus a lot on PLCs in District 205. We have teachers that chair with each other on institute days and then in buildings of late arrival. So we do felt, we felt that the collaboration was an area of strength. It's something we can continue to develop though, we're never done. In terms of design and facilitator, these two things, designing and facilitating lessons where the teacher's not the center of the room, where the teacher is, is really a facilitator of learning and not, you know, the sage on the stage giving the information as Dave talked about before. But designing thoughtful experiences that use digital tools to, you know, create a more rich experience. And then finally, as an analyst, using data and really reflecting on student outcomes and whether or not it's what we want to see. So these, these standards for educators then focused a lot of the feedback, which we're going to talk about in a little bit. We did look a little bit at the standards for administrators. You know, the visionary leadership piece, I, I, again, I cannot thank the 51 members of that committee enough for all the time that they put in, in, in helping to create a vision for what we want digital learning to look like in District 205. Digital age learning culture in the ISTI standards, in ISTI standards, there's actually a quote about rigorous, relevant and engaging education. One thing I learned through this process is that the ISTI standards are very well aligned to the work of the ICLE, International Center for Leadership in Education, who we've partnered with for the last several years. It's nice to see that coherence going forward. Excellence in professional practice, the learning and teaching group has been working with our teachers on professional practice now and things like the workshop model and, and, you know, excellent instruction. The bottom line is we cover, we, we feel like we're very well organized for this work. And I also say, you know, having the support of a board of education that believes in future-ready learning helps make all that possible. Some, it's just summary of what some of the things we talked about in terms of our strengths and then also things, areas we have to grow. There were several things listed that show how supportive we are for technology and education. We are one-to-one, we have themes grants and, and support a board of education community. We have network capacity and bandwidth, all of those things that, that are sort of necessary elements to having a successful technology program. Those things are all present. Having skilled staff, instructional coaches, professional development that's abundant between District 205 University and our institute days. You know, so we have opportunities for teachers to learn and grow. Some of our needs though, things we need to continue to look at. Towards the mill, there's approval of apps and websites, acquisition of digital resources. There was a lot of discussion around software and access. So the idea that we have, we have just the right tools at the right grade levels that are appropriate for kids. So, you know, and to give you an example, and this is something we do, but you know, we have a Britannica, we have a subscription Britannica and one of the things that's in that, besides just looking up information, is an image library. Because we're not going to take a bunch of, you know, maybe we have some groups, a group of second graders researching for a topic that they're learning about, but we're not just going to throw them on Google images at, you know, at, you know, eight years old. We don't feel that's appropriate. So, you know, having things that are, that are right there just at the student's level so that they can, you know, take the learning in their own hands. We talked a lot about hardware. Display technology is listed as things to look at. But also we talked about the types of student devices that they're using to, you know, access these digital resources. And then also professional learning. That was, you know, we talked about instructional coaches having different levels of technology expertise, which is good. You know, we, we have the instructional coaches have strengths in a variety of areas. You know, we, we have the instructional coaches have strengths in a variety of areas. So in the draft, the technology plan is still a draft. The technology committee's meeting Thursday to talk a little bit more about and give feedback. Our principals are also going to be able to give feedback on it. We'll bring that, bring the report to you. But our findings are basically separating into three areas. In terms of hardware and devices, we have some work to do with display technology. Dave's going to talk a little bit about that later. You know, we do have projectors in all of our classrooms that are starting to age. They have reached the end of their useful lifespan, and so we're looking at ways to, you know, what would be the next, you know, next iteration of where we want to go with display technology. The student device replacement cycle, we do keep up with that, but as we replace devices, the third bullet is a program analysis to evaluate their, you know, the type of devices we purchase. You know, last year, when I first started here in Elmhurst, Dave and I talked early in the fall, and we did a pilot of devices, necessarily short because of the timeline for acquiring them, but we tried to put different devices out there because the decision to go with Chromebooks really was made in two thousand and thirteen. And so devices change, different technologies come forward. We decided to use the iPads for their creative tools, and by the time we piloted iPads, we had fifth generation. By the time we bought them for the, you know, kindergarten, first graders, we had sixth-generation iPads, and those had even more features to them in terms of being able to, you know, creative tools are built in, like Book Creator and things of that nature. So what we want to do is get the Apple iPads more, we have had one year under our belt, get some more professional learning to those teachers that are using them, and then in two thousand and twenty, start looking at comparing apples to apples, because all of our elementary devices are going to be up then the year after that. We have to start replacing those as well, those will come, come around again. And so doing a program analysis to determine, you know, the Chromebook may be the device we want to keep using, but we want to make sure we do, you know, a temperature check to see where we're at, and, you know, if our outcomes are, curricular outcomes are X, which device is going to best suit our needs to meet those curricular outcomes? Again, digital tools, being able to have access to these variety of tools, either whether it's open educational resources, which we talked about a little bit last month in terms of, you know, being able to use online textbooks and things of that nature, level databases, which I mentioned earlier, depending on our different levels of learner, where they might go to get leveled text or resources that are just appropriate for their age. Student management, that would be HAPARA, which is our, you know, what gives teachers the ability to do some control and spot checks over student devices. We're looking at, you know, doing, going to a different resource or Apple Classroom at the, on the iPads. So this was an area where we did a lot of discussion, and one of the things going forward is going to be, you know, keeping that database and making, of all the digital resources that we have at all the different grade levels, and, you know, regularly reevaluating them every year to determine whether or not the resources we have, you know, there's always going to be a, you know, somebody's always built you a better mousetrap, so to speak, just to make sure that we, we have the best resources in front of our kids. And then finally, for professional learning, we really are going to try and work to personalize the learning, and I'm not going to try and steal any of Dr. Henderson's thunder. I'm sure she's going to be talking about this at a future board meeting. But personalizing learning for our teachers because we have teachers at different grade levels, that different initiatives going on, they have, you know, differing backgrounds in technology because of the way things are rolled out. Some have been had, you know, there's, some of their students have had Chromebooks for five years, others just got the iPads this fall. So because of that, we're going to try and personalize learning, and in that, in those learning strands, we're going to be weaving technology in. Technology itself is not, again, it's not the end game, but it is a strategy or tactic to get to where we want to go with students. So I, again, I cannot emphasize enough the amount of work that was put in, you know, by those individuals, giving up their time. We even had a meeting on Valentine's Day. I apologize in advance for that and brought a lot of chocolate. But, you know, they, it was really great to work with such a diverse group of folks from around the district, and them giving their time and their experience was invaluable. Happy to entertain. Any questions before we get to the boxes and wires?
Thanks. I was just, oh, you have a question? I was just going to say, that was a very large committee you had, so thank you for letting all those people participate. And by my calculation tonight, just in the presentations, we've seen at least a hundred of our teachers are involved in the work going on for, whether it's professional development of the curriculum, development of the curriculum, and I think that that is really important and good to see that, you know, they have a voice in where, where we're going. So thank you for doing that, because that's a lot of people to, you know, take care of. So thanks.
No problem.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, I thought it was, it was nice to see the excitement of the people in the group that are in the classrooms that want, that, that liked the process that was put together as to how we can get piloting things, you know, things piloted, things to get, things that, that classroom teachers are interested in checking out to see if it's useful or how helpful it will be, and how to get approval through the organization, pilot that and say yes or no, what's the feedback, and then how can we take it to the next level? So I thought that was a really good takeaway as well, as, you know, even the bigger picture, but just how we move things forward.
I'll say one more experiential thing that came out of it that was positive. You know, I've got a sixteen-year-old son, and usually the times he approaches me to come talk to me is usually when he needs money or a ride somewhere. And I think sometimes our, we treat our technology folks that way. It's like, you know, we, we call when there's an issue and it's urgent and our hair's on fire, and we ask them to come over, and they always do, and they're, they come out and they fix the problem. And then we say thank you very much, and then we'll talk to them again for about, you know, six, eight months, and then until the next crisis or something else blows up. But Dave had just about his entire team there for all of these meetings, and so the chance for our coaches and our teachers and our specialists to work interacting in different groups with our, you know, the folks that are actually doing the work behind the scenes, I, allegedly, I think a mutual appreciation among many of the folks on the group for what it is that the other does. And so the opportunity to get everybody together in one space and, and talk about the, how we all support the mission, you know, was enlightening, I think, for everybody. All right. I'm going to pass the ball off to Dave.
So while we're waiting for that, Karen, I, I have to add that if, based on your last comment, you will love the innovation presentation in May when you see what some of these teachers are doing with their integrated units. Very, very exciting, so.
Okay, well, thank you. And if Dr. Cohen was the setup and Chris is the closer, I think I must be the grounds crew, I'm just like dragging the chains around and cleaning the dirt. I'm not quite sure what my role is in that, in that scenario. But anyhow, so yes, we're going to talk about boxes and wires. I'm going to move through it relatively quickly. I don't really want to belabor some of this, but it is setting up some big-ticket recommendations coming up in a couple of weeks, and I at least want to touch on what some of those things are and give a little bit of an explanation so you have some idea of the context of what some of this is. And it does tie into supporting the district, supporting the instructional tech plan, but also the district operations and making sure that we have a healthy environment that, where things are working on a daily basis, and we can just assume, hopefully, that this stuff is available to folks. Organized into, and I'm sorry, Chris Bloom isn't here tonight because he likes the people, process, product, and price organization, so, but I, I'd like to acknowledge my tech department. There's fifteen full, sixteen included myself, but fifteen full-time staff members and a few part-time staff members that help out with, especially with events, but the names in red are new. They were hired since the last presentation, and we really got some outstanding new folks on the team. Two of those, Mark Diorek and David Fortner, have significant experience in the education industry. Mark's actually a former technology director from another district. And then Antonio's a young man who just got his degree in the technical area and just really hit the ground running. So we've really got some excellent additions to the team. And I apologize if this slide's not in your deck, but I thought afterwards I should also give a shout out to the TSI folks at York, because really, when we talk about supporting the district, you've got the TSI class at York with all the students that really support all the Chromebooks across the district, which is amazing. And then the technology assistants in all of the K-8 buildings, there's one per school. They are school-based, and they report to the principals there, but there's sort of a, I'd say they like, they're an augmentation to the tech staff. They help us out with some things in the buildings with inventory with, with, you know, tier-one-type stuff. So I wanted to at least recognize, it's not just the technology department, but there's other folks involved that, that serve the, the district. Just real quick, we, we invest in our own learning as well with just a list of things of a variety of different topics, a variety of different conferences and, and online training and, and a variety of things to, to develop. Every member of the department is going on every year. I'm not going to go through this diagram. It's really more of an icon for you to remind you that it's a very complex situation in Elmhurst with all the systems and the datas, data flows and interactions with the systems. So we are working on a number of different things. We have been for a few years now. You know, Mary Ann's also been involved in some of these conversations, obviously, but some things that are underway or have already been completed are, we've fully automated the rostering of all the Google classrooms for the teachers across the district. They no longer have to invite students and all that, so it's, it's taken that away from them, which is a good thing. We've automated some staff, populating staff into some of our systems, so phone numbers and email, email addresses and stuff for communication and for the, for the new website. This was a big one, this third one. We centralized the collection of a lot of information to report to the federal government for the Office of Civil Rights, and that may not sound real exciting, but we took a bunch of work out of the secretary's hands and out of Ellen Walsh's hands and got it pulled and assimilated and loaded into the system really automatically now, and I think we should be able to do that going forward for every, every two years we have to do that. It's a big deal. Took a lot of people's time, so we've, we've really minimized the effort there. And then we're looking at other, other opportunities for, we're always looking at opportunities for streamlining and automating the data. Another area, single sign-on, is basically how can teachers and students get to systems that we subscribe to, you know, through a simple pass-through without having to remember passwords or without having to, you know, try to find out where is this thing? There'd be almost like a portal that they could click on an icon and they're in the system. So we're working on, on things like that. Mary Ann's worked with the Decision at a Mastery Manager sort of consolidation into EDS, which will also empower other, other educators in the district as, as we discussed already in a previous presentation. And then we, my own team, we're always trying to improve. We do an annual survey. We take the feedback seriously. We look at it, we find ways to improve. We're also working on an end-user knowledge base that people can look up some things for themselves to try to enable, again, the end users. So the punchline of this whole slide is, we're, we're constantly trying to refine and improve the processes that will make things more efficient in the district. Some graphs you're probably familiar with from past presentations, but basically, clearly on the upper right, or upper left, excuse me, the device counts continue to climb, but I think the rate will, will slow down, obviously, because now that we're one-to-one, essentially. We will still have additional devices showing up for various needs, but we're probably going to see that curve flatten out. The lower left shows that with the red, I'm sorry, the blue bar kind of shows ticket counts. We did have a drop a few years ago, and now it's coming back up again. Part of that drop might have been attributed to the fact that we changed systems and, and the way that people created tickets changed significantly, and I think there was a little bit of a learning curve on, on getting used to that, but we are seeing an uptick in ticket counts, but we're also seeing with the red bar, our focus on managing tickets and staying on top of them and being responsive has helped the turnaround times drop. So we're, we're just trying to, you know, be responsive. And then the third graph on the lower right is basically showing we've had flat head count for years. That's the red bar, and then the blue bar just represents our turnover. So we're trying to, I mean, we can retain employees, we maintain that, that knowledge and skill, and we don't have to, you know, lose, lose ground every time somebody leaves the district. So we've been getting better at retaining people, and we've got basically flat head count. So we try to serve the district with, within our means as we go, you know, from year to year. Additional trends here, we, our customer satisfaction survey, we have crept back up again to, I think, a reasonable level of, of satisfaction in terms of the quantitative number. I'm glad that we held our ground a year, and hopefully, I'd like to continue to see us improve. The other bar graph at the bottom, though, is interesting. It shows, back in two thousand and sixteen, we literally had one-third of our comments were, were, were positive comments that we got back from, from the qualitative feedback. And we've, in four years, we've flipped it around. Two-thirds of our comments are now positive in the qualitative feedback. So we've just been able to, the, the feedback that people write on their own, when they say, please provide any other feedback, it's, it's totally flipped the other way. So now we still have room to grow because that means, you know, thirty, twenty-five to thirty percent of the people still have something constructive to say that we need to look at, but I'm very happy with the turnaround on, on the responses that we're getting, which means we're serving the district better now than we were a few years ago. Okay, just some, just a setup for some of the, some of the projects and funding requests coming. This represents, the way our internet works today is all the schools and all the buildings really kind of all pipe over to York, and all those purple arrows show traffic going over to York and out to the internet. The small little yellow arrow, it does have, we do have a second internet connection, it's very small, is used for non-filtered thing, non-filtered traffic, very small amounts, such that, such as Skyware transactions or some telephone packets, but basically a vast majority, almost all of our internet traffic goes out through one link, and that's risky. We've had some internet outages. We had one, I think, this school year, earlier in the year. It gets in the way of learning and district operations. So next year, we're going to have a second two-gigabit link at the, at the district office. That doubles our internet capacity, but also provides us an extra link so that should one fail, we still have another link. So we should, in theory, never really go down completely, and then you'll see basically the traffic routes both ways. So we're going to split the traffic. Both are going to be active, both are going to be taking on work, but if, should one link go down, we can switch it all over to the other. So it's reliability and capacity improvements coming this summer. This is what we have today, which I'm not going to go over, but just by comparison, where the red stars are are where, where I am going to be making recommendations. So the internet connection, obviously, is the two, the, this star right here, two-gigabit, two-gigabit link I referred to earlier is going to be put in place. And then each building, the district office and the, and York will have a new firewall, a next-generation firewall, much higher capacity, much more security features involved, very expensive, as you'll see in a couple of weeks. At York, the core switch and some network switches will be replaced. Again, higher capacity, newer technology. Those switches were put in place originally, you can see in the top part, around two thousand and twelve through two thousand and fifteen. So the lifecycle, we've, we're going through the lifecycle, but we also need more capacity. So that, that summarizes what the, the big equipment purchases are going to be in, in projects for the coming year in terms of the infrastructure. Just a quick look at the roadmap ahead. So the leftmost, I don't know what that is exactly, rectangle is what we just summarized, but then going ahead, it's really a successive wave of incrementally like upgrading the internet connections, adding newer access points, adding, upgrading servers and storage. It is what it is. When we put something in place, usually, you know, five, seven, eight years down the line, you have to, you have to upgrade it and replace it. So that's kind of what this chart shows. We're kind of, we're keeping track of what, what needs to be replaced when and what, what timeframe. When it comes to the instructional technology, next year, the middle schools are really going to be revamped in the learning spaces. The, the teachers and the students are all getting new devices. They're all going to be touchscreen. The students are going to get Chromebooks, obviously. Teachers will have Windows ten machines, and then we're going to have wireless adapters for the projectors so that they can connect wirelessly. So really, their ability, their ability to share, their ability to, you know, interact with a device is going to go up significantly. And we just did York teachers that way last summer, so this coming summer is middle school. York's got some labs we're going to upgrade. We are piloting, speaking of pilots, the K, we're going to be piloting at K-5 some new device tech, the display technologies in the classroom to replace the projectors. So we'll be, we're going to be pulling a pilot together. The planning's going on right now as we speak. And then over the, over the summer, we're going to be deploying, I think, the, the plan right now is about four schools with three rooms each, so that'll be twelve different classrooms in K-5. We'll ask teachers to use a few different types of displays, give us feedback, help us decide where we, what, what's the best tool for Elmhurst and for their, for the elementary level in Elmhurst. And then the following year, we'll do a rollout into the, into the, those classrooms of those, whatever decision we make will be rolled out in K-5. And then we're picking up then at six, twelve, we'll pick up the piloting and the discussions for the upper grade levels. So we're kind of breaking the display revolution, or I guess evolution is probably a better word, but this, display evolution into, into chunks of K-5 and then six, twelve, and it's probably going to take a few years to do this because it's a lot of money and it's a lot of work. But other, other than that, it's, it's, again, rolling through devices and, you know, on a cycle. But other than that, it's, again, rolling through devices and, you know, on a cycle. I will point out, in 2021, at the bottom, there's the MLI program review that was referenced by Dr. Cohen about taking a pause, not really pausing, but sort of like reflecting during that year and reviewing MLI program, reviewing the device program and the learning environment, figuring out what do we want to do going forward. So those future device, especially when it comes to students, the future device rollouts from 2021 for will be based on, I think, some outcomes from the program review.
So just, I just want to point out, just to make a connection here, that when you see the K5 display pilot, it's coinciding with the, with the opening of the first new building.
Correct.
So that we will have that, that plan for what we think, you know, we need to do.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. The 2020, 2021, that second bubble on the left is when we would be upgrading some displays, but that's, those new classrooms will get the new technology, as will other classrooms. And just a side comment, and I am working quite closely with Todd Schmidt on trying to dovetail plans for infrastructure, other infrastructure work, and trying not to step on our toes by having some major rollout occur and then we, you know, tear our building down or something like that. So we're trying to coordinate our plans so that we're, we're working together on that. Just a brief mention of the Chromebooks next year. Just similar to last year for the York freshmen, they're flip touchscreen stylus for writing, faster processor, just the latest technology with the Chromebooks. Those will be put into the middle schools and, again, freshmen. So we're going to have a really nice set of technology for those students to use next year. The tech fee is still the same. It does include the Chromebook protection piece, and then still TSI class with outside support for repairs as needed. That's pretty much the same. Quickly looking at the numbers, the gray column is next year tentative budget. We're at about, with expenses, kind of in the middle there, this darker number here is, we're at about $3.2 million, almost $3.5 million of expenses to support. Really, the biggest jump is in the leasing row, and that's because of the expensive equipment we're going to be leasing as part of the infrastructure upgrade. So that's given us an uptick on that, on that particular item and increasing the tech expense total. On the flip side, though, the revenues are going to be higher on the, next year, because if you look at this revenue for the E-Rate program, we will be getting a significantly higher amount of money this coming year because the E-Rate is called a Category 2 program, where when you buy equipment, a portion of that is eligible for refund from the USAC, the E-Rate program. At 40, we're at a 40% reimbursement rate for Elmhurst. So I think about $200,000 of that $300,000 is just for the equipment we're buying. So that's going to help offset some of the, some of the cost of that upfront, anyway. And then in future years, you can see the E-Rate, the E-Rate reimbursement's kind of settled back down to around $100,000 a year. But I'm just projecting ahead, and I did want to point out that when you look at the total expense row, we are hovering around $3.2, $3.3 million. Again, we're investing in infrastructure upgrades and classroom display technology. Those are the two really big-ticket items. That's where the, that's where the additional, sort of like, that's where, that's what we're fueling now. We, the board and the community fueled the device one-to-one rollouts for several years, and we've kind of made that happen, but now we're turning around back, so, okay, the infrastructure and the display technology. So we continue to invest money into advancing different parts of the technology picture as needed. Just a quick look at the budget versus expenses, actual expenses. So typically, we're in the 90s or so of the budget is actually spent every year. Last year was a little bit of anomaly. We were at only 87.5%. This coming year, or right now, this year, we're at 88%, and it'll be in the 90s because we're only, we're only entering April now. And then next year, I'm predicting, again, two, or $3.5 million of expense. Again, large infrastructure projects, I failed to mention a large Cisco SmartNet warranty, a three-year purchase, and then a increase in the internet link. Those are the main contributors to the increase in cost next year. Looking at the budget, that's how it's broken out in terms of what's just basic maintenance to keep the lights on is the blue. The red represents what we're doing to upgrade or enhance some existing things like the infrastructure, and then the green represents what's new, sort of money for like new transformative technologies such as the devices, but now looking ahead at the display technologies. And then this, this shows the budget levels, and you can see from 2011 to 2015, or 2014, 15, we were at or below $2.7 million, $2.75 million annually. And then with the one-to-one program, we bumped it up, and we were really running hot around, you know, averaging $3.1 million for about four years, five years. And now I'm thinking with the, again, infrastructure upgrades and the display technology work we have to do, we're probably going to be around $3.3 million annually. So it is a higher run rate. Some things go up in cost annually anyway, subscriptions and so on tend to go up, but we're adding internet bandwidth. We're adding new hardware in the core, on the network. We're adding expensive display technology. So I guess if we ran into a financial situation, we could discuss what isn't absolutely necessary, but if we want a few, to fund the plan that we're talking about, it's probably about a 3, 3.3 million run rate for the, at least the next, you know, foreseeable few years ahead of us. And that summarizes the, those boxes and wires portion. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
So thank.
Dave, your redundant internet link is 1 gigabit, and that's what you rely on when your 10-gigabit, I'm sorry, 100-gigabit link goes down.
Okay, so the district office has 100-megabit link right now. It's a very small.
It's tiny.
Low-capacity. That's, we don't rely on, when our internet goes down, there's no way our district traffic can go through that little 100-megabit link, the one that we have today. We just trickle some things like Skyward traffic or phone, phone packets and things that are low bandwidth, but also don't require network, web filtering.
But, but do I get it that that is, you're going to upgrade that to 1 gig?
Yes. 2 gigs. We're going to upgrade it to 2 gig. It'll be the same, it'll basically be, it's actually not a redundant link because it's active, active. Both links are going to have traffic flowing over them constantly from around the district. Should one fail, though, we're, it's, there's going to be a protocol, it's called, I won't tell you what it's called. There's a protocol that will swing all the traffic to the active, to the one live link. So we should, in theory, we should never really suffer a complete internet outage once we have the second link.
If your bigger link goes down, aren't you, aren't you just going to swamp that secondary link?
Today, that would happen, but once we get the second link in over the summer, the two links will be ident, they'll be both 2-gigabit links. So we'll have, we'll have balanced, you know, 2 gigabits at York, 2 gigabits here. Should one of those fail, we can carry. Right now, we're actually, 2 gigabits would still carry the district today, but we're trying to, you know, look a little bit ahead into the future so that should the, so traffic get even heavier, we won't cap out the internet. But yeah, after the summer, we will have two balanced links, both running traffic. Should one fail, the other one would pick up all the traffic.
Okay, thanks.
Is it slide 10? Is it slide 10?
Slide 10. This one here. So this is the one today where you have the 100-megabit at the district office. There's no way that would, that would support anything that we would need for the district. So the second link or the upgrade now will be 2 gigs. It's going to match York, and traffic can flow evenly over both, and they'll swing over to whichever one is alive should one of them fail. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
What do the purple arrows represent?
Just, just internet traffic, like, you know, streaming video, Google searches, whatever you're, whatever webs, you know, whatever you're going to for the, the schools, students are accessing online, online resources and things. That's just our internet traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right.
You bet.
Good. A little faster, please, to the podium.
Bringing in the closer. Good news, quick worker, no time between pitches.
Cohen struck us out in nine pitches.
All right, so the, we're going to cover these, these items. They're, they're all for first read because they're all, will be approved at the next board meeting. The facility rental usage agreement, six years ago, we, we spent a lot of time working on the facility rental agreement, making it cost-neutral, cost-neutral agreement so that, so that the district isn't taking on more expenses related to facility usage. And we're looking at a CPI increase, which is what our revenue stream is tied to. So it's 2.1%, but rounded up to the nearest dollar for the facility rental charges. And then for the custodial fees, we, and the other staff charges, we just increased them to match the, the cost of the staff for those, for those items. So that's the facility rental. Any questions on the facility rental? Every year, we meet in July. It's the second week in July. Have a meeting up here in this room for our facility renters that rent York, because that is in very high demand. The fieldhouse and the gyms are in constant use at York, so the user groups come in and they come to an agreement in order to maximize the use, so that all the, they, they all kind of come to an agreement, fit times and days for everybody in order to maximize that use at York. And in past years, we've kind of worked out a few other things that have issues between user groups as well. Then as far as student fees, pre-K through 8, again, with, with the user fees, we, the learning and teacher, teaching department looks at the resources that are being consumed in the different grade levels, spreads them out over, over their useful life six-year cycle for, for textbooks, figures out, we figure out a per pupil cost. Pre-K is going down $10, kindergarten going down $10, grades 1 through 5 going down $22, and grade 6 through 8 is up $7. There was a world language fee last year that was charged to grade 6 through 8. We will not have that next year. There is, they've incorporated that, the, all the fees in the 6 through 8 fee, so there is not a specific world language fee next year. And then the instrumental music and vocal music will all be $30. So the grade 7 through 8 is going down from the 150 down to the 30, and the grade 7 through 8 vocal music is going down from the 65 to 30, because that is only one day a week next year. And then we changed the athletic fees a little bit to more closely align with 20, 25% of the cost per pupil. So cross-country is our lowest cost per pupil. So 20%, so is a $20 chart. So last year, cross-country was paying $30. This year, it's going to go, or next year is going down to 20. Track was 30 last year. That's going up to 40, which closely matches 25% of the cost per pupil. Volleyball is staying the same at 100, and basketball is going up to 125. So that is it as far as K through 8. Any questions on that? So then, as far as high school fees, not, not many changes there at all. The, the Algebra II fee, which was, it was for the Alex program, we will not have that fee for next year, so that goes from $15, and it's eliminated for next year. The cap-and-gown fee is up from 27 to 28. That's just a price increase to match the cost. And then the Chromebook fee, Dave talked about the, the cost of those devices, because it's, it's a better device, will go from 310 to 320. And then, and then the, as far as the athletic fees for high school, the tier, the tiers stay the same at 100, 155, 200, and 250. We just had some sports change tiers. Volleyball will be tier 2, water polo is tier 3, lacrosse is tier 3, baseball and softball are tier 4. And then we, we split cheer, cheer, regular cheer fall and regular palm fall from competitive cheer winter and competitive dance winter. That was a suggestion that the athletic director had made, because some students would, would participate in the fall in cheer or palm, and then in the winter, they would be in another sport, and so they kind of had to pay extra because of that. So that kind of gets, straightens out that problem in that it's going to be two seasons related to palm and cheer. So that's it with the high school fees. Oh, and then the last thing is that we are going to have the lunch and breakfast and milk fees. We're holding the, the, the prices constant for next year. No change on the breakfast and lunch and milk prices. So that's it.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Okay, next up Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Just one item, personnel report. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda item A.
A sec. Go ahead. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Next up on the agenda is Superintendent's Agenda, Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Elmhurst. Again, there will be no action taken tonight on the IGA between the City of Elmhurst and the School District. While I did receive a phone call right before tonight's meeting, we had received no official response from the city since our proposal was given verbally on March 14th and sent to the city on March 29th, per their request. So to our community, you've elected us to be good trustees of the community's resources, and for the last year, we have been working diligently with the City of Elmhurst for the benefit of our community. I have been in contact with the city almost every single week for the past year on behalf of the School District to work on this agreement. I hope that after a meeting this Thursday or Friday, I will be calling a special meeting with a finalized agreement next week. Thank you. Next up is the Approval of Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth.
So Dr. Wohl accepted a superintendent position in Benjamin, and as we decided how to move forward with that, we had conversations about transferring Mark, Dr. Cohen, over to the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and then posting the Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth position and filling that. And so we are pleased to introduce our recommendation to you. Scott Grenz is a couple months, well, more than a couple months, but getting very close to completing his doctorate with a dissertation that focuses on the topic of teacher evaluation. He was accepted into the New Leaders Program and participated in that when he was in the Chicago Public Schools District, and moved from that internship and that intense training to be the principal of Lakeview High School. He's currently... He's currently the principal at Rutledge Hall Elementary School in the Lincolnwood District, and, um, in his, um, work at Lakeview was, um, um, expected to try to help transform that school into some of the different things that you heard us talking about tonight, I've been hearing us talk about for quite some time, which is, um, a future-ready school that embraces a lot of the different types of concepts that we are trying to embed in our, um, uh, learning, uh, for our students here in Elmhurst. So, um, I, I completely recommend Scott, and I would say, I think, despite in, uh, regardless of his technical background, I think that one of the things people in Elmhurst will quickly see is that he is a relationship person, um, and, um, so I think that'll become evident very quickly, and I would recommend his approval.
I move that the Board of Education approve Scott Grins as the Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Growth with a start date of July 1st, 2019, and a base salary of $153, $185.
I'll second their motion.
Any discussion? Welcome aboard.
Yeah, Scott, the benefit of sticking it out till, till 10 plus o'clock, uh, in the evening is traffic going home won't be bad.
All right, go ahead.
Dr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Welcome to District 205.
Okay, next is the Approval of Donations from Jackson, Emerson, and York.
So this is a carryover from the, uh, last meeting, and, um, since we had other action we needed to take tonight, we wanted to, uh, put this on this agenda, um, as opposed to wait to the second meeting in April. And so it's the exact same items that we discussed at the last meeting. Um, Jackson Elementary School, um, a donation in the amount of $2,943, uh, for an outdoor garden to improve the landscape and use for educational purposes, um, a gaga pit floor and some gaga balls. Um, you can see that that's becoming increasingly popular at our elementary schools. Emerson PTA would like to, uh, donate $6,139.11 to purchase a gaga ball pit for the playground. And the York High School donation, um, last year, there was a donation that was accepted on behalf of the baseball parents, um, for bleachers, and, um, that project, for various reasons, did not, um, uh, come in at the, uh, cost that they had, uh, anticipated. So there is money that was not spent on that purpose, and they would like to repurpose it for, um, a training, a baseball training machine and a sound system at the field. Um, and the, um, um, recommendation would be that you approve those three donations that were, um, originally discussed at the last board meeting.
Is there a motion?
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of donations from the Jackson School PTA in the amount of $2,943 for garden supplies, a gaga pit floor, and gaga balls. The Emerson PTA in the amount of $6,139.11 for a gaga ball pit, and the York baseball parents and Elmhurst Youth Baseball in the amount of $5,592 to reallocate money previously approved to purchase a baseball training machine and a sound system. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I second. Okay, discussion?
A just reminder, we have, um, I've talked before about moving forward to make sure all our donations are, um, make sure they benefit the whole district, and we have made, it sounds like significant progress. Uh, we are not there yet, so my vote will continue to be present. Um, so just an explanation, it is, it is not about the gifts, it's about a process where we can make sure we understand our, our donations and how they come into our district.
Um, I watch, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I watched the video and the discussion, and I was here for the earlier discussion when, uh, you brought this up, Margaret, and very sensitive to it. It's a difficult issue, and it's been lingering, and it has not been addressed. Um, and it's really got two parts. Whether there's a disparity in donations, uh, it, it impacts the student environment. And secondly, and probably more importantly, whether there's a perception that it does. And that can be the most corrosive thing if, if it's not addressed. Um, I feel the board's been proactive, taken this seriously. One of the first things that I know I worked on, um, here was the donation language to make sure that we got that reference into Policy 880, which talks specifically about furthering equity, or at least not making it worse. So the board's responded with policy. The board also responded with the administration, asking for assurances and evidence that every school has substantially identical resources and facilities, not absolutely identical, but substantially identical. The administration agreed to monitor this and periodically report, and they have complied with everything we've asked them to do. Um, there's been an attempt to address this with other parties, such as the Foundation, to take a role in certain donations. Um, the, uh, maybe some discussions have occurred, but what I haven't seen is a specific attempt to deal directly with the PTAs themselves, who are, are creating these wonderful donations. These are the donors, these are the other party in the transactions, and I'm not sure we're asking what their thoughts are. Um, when we do our liaison visits, I like to go to PTA meeting, and there always, always on every agenda is, uh, fundraising. And that's important, it's not the only thing they do. They do a good job in, uh, the, um, enhancing the, uh, environment, both, uh, classroom environment and the extracurriculars, um, volunteerism, all sorts of things they're doing, and they're doing this on top of it, and that's good. People invest in their community is why District 205, um, succeeds for its kids. But the question is, with this donation situation, are we serving all our kids equally? Um, so I guess I'd ask to have that discussion move forward. You know, my time here on the board is, is, is gonna be over soon, so I'm just gonna offer this as a recommendation, uh, moving forward for the board as it continues, and ask that that discussion go directly with the PTA, um, and ask them what their, uh, view on this issue of equity would be. I note that their, PTA's mission talks specifically about every child's potential and advocacy for all children. I also noticed that of the four principal values, this is all on the national and the state PTA website, um, they talk about the potential of everyone, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, orientation, the things you expect, but they also throw in specifically two more, economic condition and geography. And I know that when you talk to the PTAs, they're going to take this point of view, and they're going to do it, but I guess what I'd challenge them to do is to ask themselves, um, since all their fundraising appears to be geared toward the local school community, or perhaps a needy family within that local school community, but generally based on that school community, could they start thinking about ways to broaden that out in some way to, uh, approach this thing according to that fourth or that second of four values, diversity? And, uh, let them kind of unpack whether there's a way to make this equity a local concern, as well as a district-wide concern, and have that conversation a little deeper.
Jim?
John, I was the board rep at the March, March 5th PTA Council Meeting, so all the PTA presidents were there. I, um, I brought the subject up, they were very familiar with it. I gave them 20 minutes to solve the problem, and, um, we had a very good discussion. There were some great ideas that came up. Didn't solve the problem in 20 minutes, but, uh, I told them that, uh, Margaret and Kara would be following up with them. Um, and tomorrow night, I'm the board rep. I, I just don't know how I pull these...
It's all timing.
Yeah, I mean, they, they get assigned in August, and why, why am I always the person for that odd issue? But I'm going to the Foundation meeting tomorrow night, uh, and I'm gonna bring it up to them as well, um, give them 15 minutes to figure it out. But, uh, hopefully they will be in communication, and I'm gonna trust Margaret and Kara to make sure that that facilitation occurs. Um, hopefully the Foundation will be in touch with the PTA Council, and among them, they can, uh, come up with a, uh, with a solution. And as I told the PTA Council, this is not something that you want to hand back to the Board of Education to write a policy about. This is a culture in this community that needs to be changed. Um, and when the answer, when, when somebody new asks, "Why do we share our resources among the entire community?", I'd really like the answer to be, because we've always done it that way. Um, so I trust that, uh, between these great organizations, uh, within our district, that, that they can figure this out, because I heard a lot of great ideas, even within the first five minutes of, at the PTA Council.
It's great to hear, thank you.
Oh, yes, we're already maybe a little ahead of you, John. Um, so Margaret and I had a, a conference call with, um, two actually, with administration to talk through some things, and then that has been rolled to the next level of working with the Executive PTA, uh, Board, and right now, there's a solution, or I guess you call it a, what? Yeah. A solution that, um, we kind of worked out to roll out next PTA Council meeting, which I am actually the lucky, uh, person. Um, and that the PTAs are, you know, they're working on exactly what you're talking about, you know, the equity, and then the, uh, not a policy, but a, um, what's the word? A procedure, thank you. A procedure that would go with the policy that will help the PTAs, so that we can do some pre-approval potentially, and ways that, um, the school, the PTA Council can be a part of that. So, um, it's coming from, like, we discussed, you know, our thinking and where we are, and they talked about their challenges, and we sort of worked out a procedure that we think we'll try and we'll pilot for a year. The goal is to talk about it at the next PTA Council meeting, so that they can start for next fall, and then we'll have follow-up through the year and at the end of next year to see how it went. And to the Foundation, I've also been in touch with the Foundation in this process, and they're, um, you know, they're in the process of a transition too, with new, um, leadership, and so they have been part of this conversation in how we can all do great things for kids, for all kids across the district, and, um, you know, let the community do what it wants to do for its school. So, that's kind of where it's at. I don't know, did I miss anything, Margaret? So, so we're, great words, and we're, we're already rolling.
That's all good stuff, and I, I wish you well. I'll be around if you, uh, wanna let me join in.
Awesome. All right, anything else?
Yes, I have something. Um, I'm not 100% sure if this is gonna be possible, but for those of you that have your computer up, if you're able to check an email I just sent you, for some reason, the, the major donation, uh, from the women who, um, care, from last week's board agenda, $14,000, I think it was, was not, um, transferred over to this agenda, and I'm wondering if it might be possible to amend the motion to include that, um, dollar amount that, that was, um... If not, we have to wait till April 23rd, and, and that can happen, but I do think if it's possible to amend the motion, um, I'd, I'd like to have us at least consider that due to the, you know, substantial amount of that, and the fact that, um, that, that dollar amount could be used for, um, could be used for, um, you know, kids this year, yet the sooner that, that, that's available. Um, I, I think it was just a mistake transferring the, the, um, items over that, um, that was not caught.
John?
I'll make the motion to amend, to add that donation to the motion already on the floor, subject to the condition that this meets the proper notice requirements of the Open Meetings Act, as confirmed in a conversation with the board's attorney.
I will definitely confirm that, and if it's not acceptable, um, then we will, you know, just bring it back, yeah.
I'll second John's motion.
So we need to vote on the motion to amend? The first motion? Okay, and that is a voice vote? Not a roll. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, now we will vote on the amended motion, which is on the floor.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrow?
Present.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five, five ayes, no nays, one present, one absent, motion passes.
I'll take a minute to thank every one of the donors to, um, the four donations. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Okay, Superintendent's Communication Master Facilities Plan Update?
So, I know that it is kind of, uh, frustrating to, well, late, but frustrating to kind of know that there's a lot of stuff going, and, and not necessarily really being able to see the tangible evidence of what that stuff is. So, um, the bad news is that I can't show you a lot of that stuff tonight, but the good news is that it's forthcoming very soon. And so all of the preliminary planning work that's been going on with, um, the architects, with Todd, with the core planning team, um, and with all of the various input groups that have been formed along the way, um, there's one final checkpoint with, with all of these discussions, with the school-level teams coming up this week, and then I have requested individual meetings with board members to try to give people who are interested the opportunity to see those draft concepts that, and, and, and understand, you know, the thinking that went into various aspects of that, uh, prior to a board presentation on April 23rd. Um, under the Superintendent's, um, Communication, White and Company will be presenting those for the first time publicly, and then, uh, early in May, uh, we will, uh, plan for some community presentations, uh, where we can share these concepts and, um, allow for some discussion and, um, uh, input and feedback, um, and then information flow to answer questions about things that people may have about what would be going on in their community, um, and, uh, and then move forward with the final design process and get into, um, uh, bids, and then essentially what, um, I, I kind of tried to explain last time, is then, once, once we get to the fall, the process starts all over again with Lincoln, um, and that will be a lot more complicated in some ways, because there'll be a lot of different things that have to be considered besides just the designs. That's when you're gonna get into the transition plans, um, and the staffing plans, and all various different other kinds of things that are gonna go into that part of it. meetings, et cetera, but very soon, you will have the opportunity to see that work kind of start to come to fruition, so.
Next is Senate Bill 1189.
Yeah, so today was a very interesting day, because I was about to kind of give one report that was based on the information in the board packet. Some of this is similar, but because of the marijuana legalization of marijuana and the proposed expansion of gaming in Illinois, those two major bills that are going to be coming up this spring, any other bill that the House and the Senate are interested in, they're trying to go through as quickly as possible without some of the similar types of deliberation that have gone on where different stakeholder groups may get involved in negotiating the final outcome of some of these bills or other things like that. And so, as you know, Illinois is the most restrictive state in the country in terms of required PE, and already. So this Senate Bill 1189, the provisions there were to do some things with the waivers that are really not that impactful necessarily, but the big things that are in the bill that we, in the education profession, found problematic, were the ones mandating more minutes of instruction at the middle school level and the elementary level. And so today, I received information from our groups that are in Springfield, our education groups that spend a lot of time in Springfield, that this bill was, an amended bill was going to go back to the Education Committee and then come back out. And so when that happens, they do another process for people to file witness slips. So at 1:30 in the afternoon, we received notification that this was going back to the Education Committee, and that we had till 3 o'clock before the Education Committee was going to meet to deliberate it. And so there was a flurry of activity across the state, and in that hour and a half, there were 300-plus witness slips that were filed. And the Senate Education Committee decided not to bring that bill to the Senate for a vote until at least May, and possibly the next legislative session. And what I want to do is explain what some of those provisions, how some of those provisions for additional time would impact our programming here, because I do believe that even though this has been pushed back, in Springfield, for whatever reason, typically, the legislators will listen to the superintendents and the education groups, but they have not been listening to the education groups. And I think that the only way that they will, that we can get their attention, is if our community contacts their elected representatives directly with their thoughts on this matter. And so I think that we need to educate our community as to what would be, you know, the impact on our student experiences, so that they can decide if they feel that this is something that they want to register their opinion. And the reason that I think that this is a good thing, besides all the negative ramifications that I will explain in a minute here, is that it will give us a little bit of breathing room to construct a thoughtful communication that's not, you know, the sky is falling type of thing. We can be a little bit more thoughtful, which I think will be a good thing. So I'm going to provide the information in a slightly different form than it's in your package, just because of everything that went on today. So the most updated, this is the most updated information I have, and the bill would require 30 minutes of PE daily at the elementary level, and 225 minutes per week at the middle school level. We currently have 60 minutes of PE with a PE teacher, and 45 minutes of teacher-directed PE per week at the elementary level, and 200 minutes of PE at the middle school level. I spoke with Darlene Rochetti, who is the regional superintendent for DuPage County, and John Berkey, who is the executive director for Luda today. And although it's not completely clear, most people at this point currently believe that the 30 minutes of PE at the elementary level would require a certified PE teacher. So the scenarios, because the middle school level blocks the time, blocks of time need to be consistent in order to develop a master schedule, the only way to preserve our current programming without cutting an elective is to add five minutes to each elective and reduce the core blocks to 70 minutes from 75 minutes, because we currently have 40 minutes of PE every day, so that's an extra five minutes of PE, and then we have to make the corresponding adjustments. At the elementary level, the only way to get more minutes of PE without reducing electives would require adding time to the school day, which would require opening up the contract and increased labor costs. If the law requires a certified PE teacher to deliver instruction, costs would increase on top of that by more than $850,000 annually. So what that number is, is it can't be explained at this point, because it has to go through the negotiations process, but it will be a couple million dollars a year. It equates to a 6.7% increase in the workday approximately at the elementary level, and you're not going to get an increase in any dollar amounts, because time is going to equate to money for just one group of teachers on that contract. So I don't know what that dollar number would be, but it won't come cheap. So those combined cost increases would be unsustainable, so therefore, in order to comply with the law, electives would need to be reduced. And so we are anticipating that, based on our administrative judgment, at the upper-grade levels, the first thing that would need to be impacted would be the Spanish, with some possible additional reductions in art and music, significant cuts to art and music at the K-2 level. The impact on half-day kindergarten is unknown. The reason there are ambiguities at this point is because a lot of times what happens is people pass the law, but you don't know exactly how the interpretation or the implementation's going to be until it goes through the rules and regs process. So I don't believe that our community's going to want to see a reduction in fine arts. I don't believe they're going to want to see a reduction in core instruction. I don't think administratively, we think that we can afford to lose the time that we worked so hard to get for interventions at the elementary and middle school level. And so I do think that this bill is very problematic. Hopefully, this process will not only allow us to educate our community, but possibly get some of the legislators to listen to what the ramifications of this would actually be on their local districts, one of them being at virtually every elementary school across the state, no space to accommodate all this additional PE. So that's basically the update on Senate Bill 1189. I thought it was important to bring that to the floor publicly, because really, I think that most people in the community would have no idea what's going on. And when you say, "Well, is more PE a good thing?", nobody's judging the relative value of PE versus any other offering, but what we're suggesting is that this bill is not -- it's an unfunded mandate, it reduces local control, and adds a significant impact on other areas. So if this is the PE lobby and a jobs bill, it's not going to increase jobs, it's just going to result in staff cuts in other areas, because districts are not going to be able to afford this. So if you think of the larger districts, you just compound the costs that I just said for everybody else, there's no new funding coming, and there's already a teacher shortage in Illinois, and there, I just don't know where people think we're going to find all these extra PE teachers just sitting around somewhere, you know. So at any rate, that's my update. I would suggest that it's a good idea to allow Bev to continue to refine this message, and then we can share it with you to look at, where our sense of urgency is not quite as it was at 2 o'clock this afternoon. So I think that we can take some time, put something together that you can feel comfortable with, and then get something out to our community.
Questions? We do have a meeting scheduled with our state senator for April 29th.
Yeah, we originally, when this was first starting to go down about five weeks ago, I called Senator Glowiac's Springfield office, her local office, and Ellen reached out to her to try to set up a meeting, and we got no response. And she was on the Senate Education Committee, and that bill got out of the committee originally by a 9 to 7 vote. And I was very upset that she would not talk with us to understand how this would affect her schools, but since that time, Kara's magic wand has worked some type of benefit to where she has now agreed that she will sit down and talk with us, and that is a good thing. I was afraid this afternoon that it was going to be a little bit too late, but hopefully now we have a chance to sit down and talk with her.
And I spoke with her today as well, and, you know, felt that it was important, she understood the ramifications on our community and our school district, so.
Kara, what did she have to say to you?
Um, didn't, well, just felt that, you know, we wouldn't want to hire more teachers, and I explained that it was a bigger conversation than that, and that without any money, why would, you know, that would be a million dollar, you're basically asking us to make a million-dollar staffing decision potentially, and we also don't have appropriate space. And it also takes away the choice of the community to have what they value, and we already do provide physical activity for our students every day, but they, you know, it would take other things away. And she didn't have much to say, other than that clearly I didn't want to hire more teachers, which if one of you that have been on the board longer, I believe we've hired quite a few teachers, so we do...
Numbers, Chris?
You're saying she thought it was an unwillingness on our part to hire more teachers. Did she seem to grasp the other implications of it, that the school day is only so long? And if you, I mean, the balloon's only so big, so if you want it bigger over here, you got to squeeze it over there.
I would say, in our short conversation, no, but I'm hoping that on April 29th, when we're in person, since this was over the phone, that we would be able to go a little deeper. This was, I was able to catch her right before she was going into the session, so she didn't have much time, but she at least knew, and I made her aware as well, that we were educating our community, so that our community would, you know, know the impact that this bill would have on them and their children's education.
And who's going to be in that April 29th meeting?
Dave and I.
Do you also have the data in your back pocket of our staffing increases?
Yes.
It's a busy day. Anything else? All right, tweet of the week.
Oh, good evening. I know that our energy for the tweet has gone down to a slight chirp at this point. But we do want to say with some excitement that we certainly are thrilled for the wonderful work that we can find on our, as evidenced on our Twitter feed. And Madison Early Childhood Center takes the nod this week, and it says, and you can find them @MadisonD205 if you're looking for more of their great work, "But more rocking with Music Monday at Madison to celebrate the week of the young child and the importance of quality early childhood programs. @MadisonD205, @ElmhurstD205, hashtag W O Y C, and hashtag IgniteD205." Wonderful work at Madison going on, and parents are always thrilled when they come in and out. If you go over and you see the parents picking up their kids, the kids run out with such excitement, just waiting and spilling over the things that they've learned. So very proud of Madison and the work that they do there.
Thank you. Okay, board communications. I just wanted to communicate that at our next meeting, we will honor our three outgoing board members, and we will also seat our three new board members, and there will also be a reorganization. That will be at the April 23 meeting. So any other communications? All right. With that then, we have two upcoming meetings scheduled, Tuesday, April 23, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center, and also Tuesday, May 14, 2019, 7:30, District 205 Center. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.